All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the planning commission meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It looks like all of the planning commissioners are present except for Wendy Fassberg, who's recused herself, so her absence is excused. First item on the agenda, of course, is the pledge of allegiance. And Dennis, could you lead us in that? Thanks. But Dennis unmute yourself.
Thank you for that reminder. Got it? And the flag is on the screen, and you don't need to stand, put your hand over your heart and begin with me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Dennis. And it's a little odd because there's feedback, so it's hard to do it in unison, but that's pretty good. So the agenda needs to be approved. Is there a motion for that?
Let's all move.
Second, Dennis.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 And now post. Okay. Now we go to announcements and introductions, and I would start with you, Dennis, because you often have interesting things to announce.
Well, I will announce this. It's a really big picture thing, and I would ask everyone to take a moment and reflect. The United Nations is going to start on June fifth, what they are calling the decade of ecosystem restoration, not ego, ecosystem restoration. And there are a number of us who are working to have communications ready to speak to the world. And we might be thinking about how we might like to do that in order to both showcase the ecosystem restoration efforts that we put into our community for the past fifty years and thirty as a city. And and what are we going to do between now and two thousand and fifty-one? What where we had better get to, you know, three hundred parts per million of carbon in the atmosphere. We're at four seventeen now, and it's heading to five fifty-seven. And we're pretty good at figuring out what to do in our own community. Let's see what we can do to help the world figure it out as well. June fifth, watch for the declaration from the United Nations. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Anybody else have announcements?
None here.
No? John, Bob, Daniel?
No.
All right. The next is oral communications from anyone who wishes to comment on something that's not related to what's on the agenda tonight, which is the West Village project. So if anyone wants to speak, anybody in the public, let me know if somebody's raised their hands and they want to speak about something other than West Village. Either, you know, press raise hand, or I think you do star nine on a telephone if you want to speak on something not related to West Village. Nothing? Who's handling this? Is it Michael or?
Yes, good evening. I do not see anyone with their hands raised.
Okay, then I guess they're all here on the next item, which we might as well resume. It's a public hearing. It's a public hearing on file number one, six, zero, 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 three, one, five, two, known as West Village. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Let me sort of outline where we're what we're going to be doing tonight. First, Matt Summers is going to make an explanation of where we are with this project. Because we had three hearings a couple of years ago, and then and then Glenn, senior planner, is going to give a staff report, and then the commissioners can ask questions for clarification about those items, and then the applicant is going to make a presentation, and then the commissioners may again ask questions for clarification only. And then we're going to have public comment, which will probably have to limit to two minutes apiece. And when we get there, I'll repeat it again. You have to press raise hand, or if you're on Zoom, or star nine if you're on the telephone. And you're going to give us your name and city of residence, and, you know, feel free to state that you disagree with the prior speakers. Then we'll close the public hearing, and the commissioners can can ask more questions and deliberate. But we may not be able to finish all the public comment tonight, and we have another hearing. I'm sorry, another day for hearing for this hearing on April twenty-one at six P M. When this matter resumes. So so we'll just sort of play it by ear and see how how long, you know, how many speakers we have and how long it takes. So with that, well, I'll turn it over to you, Matt, our city attorney.
Thank you, Vice Chair Harrison. So for those who don't know, my name is Matthew Summers. I am the Assistant City Attorney. And I wanted to provide a couple of brief legal points ahead of Glenn Mickich, who will give the staff presentation and then comments from the public. First off is, you might be asking yourself, why are we here and where are we? As you may recall, this project was previously considered by the planning commission in June and July of two thousand and nineteen. And the outcome then was of two-part motion. The planning commission voted on a divided vote to direct two things to happen. First, preparation of a resolution for denial with the necessary findings to recommend denial of the project by the city council. That resolution is prepared. It's in tonight's packet as exhibit B. And I'll note there is one typo to be corrected on page thirteen in the first paragraph, seventh line, second from the end word manufactured slows should be manufactured slopes with the P. Second part of the motion was to prepare, rather to evaluate alternatives. The commission had had extensive discussion about alternative four and recommended that the developer evaluate alternatives to the project that would meet the underlying goal of alternative four, which was to develop the site without remediating the hillside. The final motion, however, was broader than just that. The final motion included in a coda that the analysis be of any alternatives to the project. And staff has brought the project back to you now for consideration with a new alternative, that is, alternative five. Glenn will cover the details on that. That new alternative has been evaluated in the revised amended final E I R that is before you as well tonight, and the associated analyses and responses to additional public comment. So just to recap there, the original action was not final. It was direction to staff to prepare a resolution that would then could then be made final. The planning commission has all options before it tonight. You may vote on the end by tonight, I mean, tonight, or if you decide, depending on how many folks who want to speak in your in this pair of hearings, it could be vote next time, not necessarily vote tonight. You may recommend that the city council deny the project as before, which would mean adopt the resolution in exhibit B with any modifications as desired. You may also recommend approval of the project as staff recommends. That would be to adopt exhibit A with modifications or additional conditions as desired. You could alternatively recommend approval of alternative five. Were you to do that, we would recommend that you adopt the exhibit A with direction to modify it to to account for what an approval of alternative five and the necessary findings to make those adjustments. The resolution for denial includes findings that are required under the Housing and Accountability Act, the no net loss law and compliance with the city's municipal code. Preparation of those findings was what required time to prepare this resolution. In other words, question that has been raised in some, I should rephrase, has been raised through extensive questions between then and now is why didn't the resolution return instantly? And the answer is because the resolution needed to be written to account for those additional findings and because the sequel process had to be completed. As the planning commission had directed analysis of alternatives, it fell to staff to analyze those alternatives. And in doing so, we could not bring it back piecemeal. It needed to be a complete assessment of the alternatives. Hence, alternative four was analyzed further and alternative five was developed and analyzed again in the E I R that is before you. The project before you is is a brought back for final conclusion. And two further, two final points. One is, again, on the minor correction side. The staff report had a broad statement as to the ownership of the property. The title of the property is held in two parts, T H N C Canyon Oaks LLC for parcels one and two and freeway properties three LLC or L O P, rather, for parcel three. If the commission were to approve the project, we would update the relevant lines in exhibit A, the resolution of approval to reflect that. And those are entities entirely controlled by the new home company. There is no other owner, beneficial owner at stake. Those are LLCs within limited liability companies. That is owned by the new home company. The so the final point I'll just note is, as before, the planning commission's action in June two thousand and nineteen was minute action to direct staff to prepare a resolution. If the commission wishes to move forward with that approach, you would need to adopt exhibit B that's before you. Alternatively, staff, as they will explain in detail, recommends approval of the project. That would be exhibit A. Either it could be adopted as adjusted. Alternatively, you can recommend approval of alternative five, and to do so would be adopting exhibit A with adjustments that we would explain at the at that time as may be desired. I see a hand up from a commissioner. Is that is that a question for me or a question for staff?
That's a question for you.
Okay, I will take that question. Thank you.
Okay. Since we reviewed this project and all this work has been done, we've also reorganized the planning commission. So we have two new or one returning relatively new and a new commissioner in the hearing process. Is there any consequence or any consideration that either has been given or needs to be given to the fact that we have folks who are new to the project essentially?
Yes, thank you. That is correct. Commissioners Leah and Millstein are new to the project. They have, to my knowledge, and I'll ask them to confirm, reviewed the prior materials. They were sent copies of all of the same public information that the public had from the last two times, last three times in two thousand and nineteen and are really fully ready to take part in deliberations on this project. And this is where I will ask Commissioners Leah and Millstein in turn to confirm that you reviewed the prior materials and are up to speed on the project.
Yes, I have.
And Commissioner Leah, you're on mute. At least you were a moment ago.
Bob, if you unmute yourself, you can answer if you've had the opportunity to review the materials.
Yes, I have. Both the materials and the prior meetings ad nauseam.
Thank you. If I may, I'm sorry. Both of them have also visited the site, so they've seen it the same as the other commissioners. Right.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. And I'll note that the site visits were conducted two by two. There were never three commissioners at the site at the same time.
Right.
That is the end of my initial legal points. Just to, again, to reemphasize to folks, the prior denial was a recommendation to staff to prepare a document. That document is now before you. It has not yet been denied. The project remains alive, and the commission is now asked to make that decision. With that, I will turn it to Mr. Mickich for the staff report. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt Summers. Welcome, commissioners and staff, the public, of course. Thank you for joining us tonight. Few housekeeping items. Um, you know, city staff, but we have quite a quite a bunch of consultants joining us tonight, so I'm going to introduce them to you. Not all of them are on as panelists right now. There are some experts that we can pull into the mix as we need for questions. But generally, we'll have from the city's usual consulting reviewer for geotechnical studies is Ross Kiovani. And we have Joe Power from Ringcon. We have Lindsay Sarkia from Ringcon. And we have Matthew Holly from L G C Valley, also a geotechnical consultant. Subconsultants kind of waiting in the wing and other Ringcon folks waiting in the wing are Scott Shell, traffic consultant from H T E. We have Sarah Brandberg from Fair and Peers for V M T analysis, additional traffic methodology. From Ringcon, we also have Annalise Miller, who is a co-project manager, I think is the official title. And for biology tonight from Ringcon, we have Greg Ainsworth. And then for next Wednesday's meeting, we're going to have a different biologist named Thea Benson, so we can introduce her at that next meeting. But so those guys are waiting in the wing. And then for your city staff, we do have Tatiana and Robert Yalda on board with us tonight for our engineering department in addition to us, us planners that you see. So let me, uh, let me see if I can do this properly and start the screen share from my PowerPoint. Just real basically, we we intend to keep this fairly brief as a PowerPoint. Um, there's really no need to go through a ton of information that we went through in two thousand and nineteen. So we're going to kind of do a semi-overview, followed by really focusing on what's happened since the meetings in two thousand and nineteen. So in the middle of our presentation, we have the Ringcon. Our Ringcon consultants are going to step in and do an E I R segment that talks about the process there and what they looked at and what they reviewed. And I think Tom's going to step in and focus in on the housing piece for us tonight. And then I'll finish this off. So with that, I'll share my screen and get into this. Can everybody see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. So we'll start with the kind of the the outline of what we're going over tonight, going to start with what I was describing, the background section, talk a little about about the site, our general plan's guidance, the project that is still before us, and Matt already covered our our recommendations, so I won't really dwell on that. Then we're going to get into a little bit of the geology and the alternative for analysis and determination of infeasibility. Short presentation on the update of our oak trees on the site for pulsed wolsey fire conditions. And then we'll get into the amenity I R and our new project alternative, alternative five. Then on to Tom for the housing element and a little bit about the applicable state housing laws, and then we'll we'll finish up here. So let's start with the background. Again, we'll talk about characteristics. Then get into the project description and our recommendation. So here's our project site. Just a few things to point out. You see the property boundary on here. We have the one-on-one freeway where my cursor is running. We have Lost Virginous Road. The colony development is adjacent to the west here. Albertson Shopping Center is down here where the cursor is. Highway Triangle where Taco Bell and some of the strip centers there are. Basically, the project site is located at the eastern terminus of Agora Road. A little bit about the site, you see, basically from this, kind of a flatter valley portion of the site that's kind of tucked in close to Lost Virginous Road. And it's surrounded by steeper slopes all around that valley portion. So one thing that's unique about the way our general plan approached this site, and interestingly enough, there is no other parcel in this city that describes where a development boundary should be on it. All the other parcels are designated for certain allowed land uses and intensities. And a developer is forced to kind of find out where the best place to put that development is and work with us usually on that. Our general plan has done that already. It's defined a sixteen-acre portion that is to be the development area. We cannot place permanent development outside of that. Consequently, is designated the remaining part of that parcel, the sixty-one acres, as open space. And as we're aware of, from out of the two thousand and nineteen hearings, we have a landslide to have to deal with. That landslide is approximately twenty-one point four acres. And it is a well-documented landslide in studies that go far before even when our general plan was adopted in two thousand and eight. So we're going to talk a little bit about that. As happens with every general plan process, we need to do an environmental impact report that studies the potential impacts to implementing that general plan. And there were landslide hazard areas identified in the general plan that were identified and mitigations that needed to be implemented that turned into general hand, general plan policies. But what's really unique about this site is that it was specifically identified as having this landslide hazard on it. And the policies that that came out of that and the mitigations that were in the E I R to mitigate those potentially significant impacts to less than significant level were to geotechnical engineering of those landslide areas and that the primary remedial measure from is to remove and recompact those slopes from toe to top. So there's already a little built-in guidance on how to deal with landslides. We talked a little bit about that in two thousand and nineteen. Just wanted to bring that back up. Out of that came two general plan policies that we follow with every project, which is basically when there is a landslide hazard identified, we have site-specific studies that show us what the extent of that is and what the characteristics of it are. And then identification of proper mitigation using experts. So I wanted to move a little bit on to the site itself, a little bit of the characteristics of it. Because that kind of played into how the general plan designated the site and how it chose the development boundary. We have some existing roads in Culver's. You can see them on this over overhead photo. You can see this, these roads basically service the debris basin areas, and we have remnant pieces of older roads that kind of go up the canyon. You can see it continue to go up the canyon through the property and then even off the property. And it turns and kind of goes into the regional trail system and connects with those. Here are two detention basins that were developed for development of the colony. And they're kind of in the western portion of the site here. And then we have some material under here. And when we get into the geology section, we're going to see that a lot of this material is not properly compacted. It's it's unconsolidated fill, probably leftover from road freeway construction, other previous development on site. But as you would walk around this parcel, those features are very obvious. And so what the general plan did is chose that area to place a development footprint to where you cannot go outside. So it already kind of conformed to the policies that our general plan guides you to, which are clustering of development close to the roads and already the developed areas and keeping it on flatter portions of the site. So that led to our visioning for this west side of town and of the of the parcel itself led to a planned development concept where we have multiple designations, if you will, on the on the parcel, which is a planned development and then multifamily in that area. And there's the site. And what our general plan allows for that site is one hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet of commercial area and a maximum of one hundred and eighty multifamily residential units. And again, it's limited to a sixteen-acre footprint. Now, what was proposed, and that's kind of all those factors led to what ended up being proposed, which is actually on an eleven-acre footprint, so smaller than what the general plan's boundary defines. And we'll get into the components of that in a second here, but on a on a more macro level, it's going to leave sixty-six acres of open space, which are actually proposed as permanent deed restricted. So it'll actually add five acres of open space to what our general plan allows for or requires presently. So our project description as currently, it has not changed, is for the one hundred and eighty multifamily units. It's generally within fifteen three-story buildings, has eighteen, which is ten percent of the units designated for very low-income families as a small commercial component of fifty-eight hundred square feet, a little above. Small Pocket Park, point three six acres. As I just mentioned, leaves sixty-six acres of permanent open space. Proposes to dedicate a trail easement through the project that will link to some open space lands that are owned by M R C A to the east. And then, of course, proposes to remediate the twenty-one point four acre landslide. Within the open space component, I've already mentioned that it's going to be deed restricted and is conditioned as such in the draft resolution of approval. That open space includes undisturbed terrain and biota. It disturbs the area of the landslide, which will be graded, stabilized, reshaped, contoured, and revegetated with native plants. And those mitigations are in the E I R. And then we'll add in a couple of flood control and drainage easements and devices. There's going to be two detention basins, some primary to the east and then a secondary to the north. I mentioned already, the trail access easement is proposed due to property through the open space areas as well. And there is a small segment of the New Millennium Home Loop Trail that's located in the southeast corner of the property, and that will be preserved. I mentioned the De Siltine Basins already. So you saw the one on the map, the primary one, the larger of the two. That's going to move to the east and be the primary. And then again, there's a small, smaller northern secondary one. I mentioned the landslide, this landslide remediation already. And then the the oak tree, the oak trees on site is that there's, I believe, it's upwards of two hundred, and we'll get into that, but one hundred and sixty-one of those are to be preserved, which is approximately seventy-eight percent of the oak trees on the property. And currently, they're proposing planning of four hundred and eighty-four new oak trees throughout the project site. That landscape plan is only preliminary. There would be a final landscape plan, should this be approved, that would be looked at and mitigations specifically pertaining to oak woodlands to recreation of any oak woodlands that are lost throughout that. So this four ninety-four might actually change, but there is a maximum inches of oak trees out there that will be removed, and the plan would be to plant an equal amount of inches of oak tree. So and Matt already went over what the recommendation was. So as we know, it was to bring back a resolution of denial and an added recommendation that they evaluate alternative four, which they did. And they they can bring back any project alternative for further consideration, which is why we're here tonight. So like I said, they did what what essentially the commission was asking them to do. They evaluated alternative four. To do that, they hired an independent geotechnical consultant, and so they submitted a review by that consultant. Additionally, they submitted a wolsey, a post wolsey oak, pulse wolsey fire, excuse me, oak tree assessment to figure out what the newest condition of the trees are after the fire. And then a new project alternative, which we will go into. And then a new project alternative, which we will go into later. We also had our consultants at Ringcon and through some of their subs. Perform a peer review. And then uh uh because because there was a certain amount of time that elapsed. We wanted to keep our our um our technical information updated and so we had. Updates to the traffic impact analysis. We added in a V M T or vehicle miles traveled analysis. Which was a new requirement under CEQA, but not technically required for this. We just wanted to expand what we've already done. And um the biological resources, we had the biologists go back out to the site. Look around to see if the bio biota out there has significantly changed. So so we digested all that information and the result. Was basically a determination that alternative for. The desirable alternative is not actually feasible. And so there was a development of a new alternative to replace the alternative that was rejected. And those amendments. Resulting were in an amended E I R. And so that E I R was amended because all of that submitted information constituted significant new information. And so under CEQA, we were required to prepare amendments to the original final E I R. And. Matt already described this too, so um we're bringing back the recommended denial resolution. After and at the same time of actually. When all this new information could be presented to you. For consideration at the same time. So now we're going to get into alternative four and what the geotechnical reviewers found. And why alternative four in the end was determined to not be feasible. So the third party review was by Layton and Associates. Uh they were hired by the applicant to perform that. So they submitted and we had that peer reviewed actually by two consultants. Ross Kiboni from Will Dan, our our usual city consultant. Reviewed, peer reviewed that report in addition to L G C Valley. And they both basically came back with. Concurring with the findings, um but we'll get up into that in a bit. So basically some introduction to the site geology and our consultants. Are here and the applicant has geotechnical consultants that I believe are going to talk about this too. So I apologize if there's a little redundancy. They can probably speak a lot more eloquently to these more technical issues than I, but I'm going to try to do kind of a a rudimentary. Lesson here, if you will, to the site and a little bit of the geology and how we looked at it. So you see a lot of arrows on here, but the first one I want to point out is this orange. Shape and that is our landslide. That's the southern slope, north facing southern slope. That's the extent of it. As you can see, it kind of goes off of the property a little bit. And now down a little bit into this valley area. So right where my cursor is down here, that would be about where that detention basin is. So these areas in blue. Are the artificial fill, the fill material that's down in the valley here that we talked about, those graded pads. The drainage control features. And uh other dirt and debris material, the roads that most of that's down here in this triangular area. And there's where the development footprint currently proposed. Kind of super imposes on there so you can see that relationship. So these aren't these typical geologic definitions, but they might cringe when when they see me say this as definitions, but. When we talk about them in this PowerPoint, when I talk about them in this PowerPoint, this is what we mean we mean when I I mention these terms. So gross and seismic stability is really relating to the ability of a slope to resist. Failure on a mass scale. So seismic refers to earthquake. And gross refers to deep seated. So we're talking about any kind of large scale landslide failure. When we talk about superficial stability, those are shower depth failures. So you might hear terms come up along with this such as slumping, sloughing. Surficial sliding. Soil erosion, mud and debris flows. Those are typical terms that kind of come along with superficial stability concerns. And then you're going to hear this and you've probably heard this already. Uh I know it came up in two thousand nineteen and we're talking about it again today, but. This terms factor of safety. And I've included a very basic diagram on here that that um I stole from a a geology class, I believe. And it demonstrates basically what a factor safety is, which is a ratio of a resisting force. To a driving force. So the basic concept we're talking about here. Is that material has an ability to resist. Another material as that force drives down on it. And as that ratio decreases to closer to one, that means your resisting forces. In comparison to your sheer forces or your driving forces. Are getting to the point where the driving force will eventually. Out compete the resisting force and the mass will move. So a factor of safety at one and a half or greater, which is. What generally are what it is what our general plan says needs to be the case, which is considered stable. Means that the resisting forces are exceeding the sheer force by at least fifty fifty percent. And that's what's considered stable. So again, if. You change this ratio and that can happen by either adding. Elements to the driving forces, shaking is a good example, moisture is a good example. If you add that to it, the ratio can go down. Likewise, if you remove resisting forces. That could occur naturally such as a drainage that undercuts a slope. Or um grading activity could be manmade. If you remove those forces, again, you're changing that ratio and you risk slope failure. So as I mentioned, uh Layton was hired by the applicant to review and submitted their findings to us. They focused on a review of the project and all of the alternative alternatives. Focusing especially on alternative four, since that was really the direction um the planning commission. Was desiring. And so again, we had both uh Will Dan, Geotechnical and L G C Valley review those two. Review those that report. And they concurred with the findings in them. And those findings were that alternative one, which is basically the no project alternative. So the landslide in its current condition has factors of safety. That are less than the one point five. So static conditions are kind of as is and geologists can probably explain what static versus pseudo static means a little better than me. But pseudo static is essentially applying a consistent force. Probably equal to that of of an earthquake or a certain magnitude earthquake. To see what the material could do. To see about the stability. So um I'll let them further explain that if anyone's confused. But their overall determination was really that under drain conditions and these are the most optimal conditions. Meaning no water in there to reduce that factor of safety. That a strong ground shaking and earthquake essentially could induce mass landslide movement in the order of several feet. If you increase water into that scenario. Then that will lower the factor of safety and mass landslide movement could occur. With even less severe shaking or wet weather or a combination of the two. And that those consequences. Now remember, this is without any development on on the parcel. Couldn't lead to changes in the drainage pattern, the the surface drainage. And that can lead to possible flooding and mud flow conditions to down downflow areas. Which would really be lost virginous road and some of that surrounding development. So the bottom line there is that if if the landslide isn't remediated, it will move. Someday could move in small portions. It could be, you know, gradual over time. It could be a mass movement. That is uncertain, but it will move. So now I'll I'll look at alternative four. And so basically. The design of alternative four was to shift development to the north. And place development on a smaller footprint of seven acres. Leaving a buffer area. Kind of where the uh debris basin is and up a little bit to the east. To where if the landslide were to be reactivated, it would flow into that area. In theory safely. The development would be safe because of that area being the buffer zone. That concept that was uh studied in the E I R was. More more residential units, so two hundred and thirty residential units, slightly smaller commercial component. But it but leaving that that buffer. And so this was studied. And the findings for it. Were listed in the report. So basically, since we're not grading that landslide area. Everything I just explained about alternative one, those those same geotechnical principles and consequences will apply. Only now you've put development there. So really the uncertainty, and this was, I think, a a big part of their report, is that uncertainty with predicting. The extent of the failure because you don't know exactly where it's going to fail, how much of it's going to fail and what the distance of that slide run out is. It could result in in. Several things. In large, deep seated slide. You know, caused by ground shaking or wet weather or a combination could result in damage to the structures and could actually threaten occupant safety. Additionally, since there is no um compaction of that slope, those those loose. Materials on the surface, the soils could slide as well. So superficial sliding. Over time, you know, those slumps, those uh sloughing. All of that is possible. And the consequences to that. Kind of are are uh they range. So but um they could get as consequential as. Being large enough to damage property and also create life threatening mud flows in those wet weather conditions. And so because of those conclusions. Neither Layton or either of our city project reviewers can really recommend. Alternative four with uh no mitigation to the slope. So what Layton did is he actually uh looked at a uh. A version of alternative four, so they were looking at variations to try to see if they can somehow achieve that in other ways. And they developed a best case scenario uh design. That would achieve the one, at least in this case, the one point five factor of safety. Enough to uh good enough to to protect the site from that kind of deep seated or or mass failure we're talking about. So they came up with a scheme that utilizes four hundred and fifty four, four hundred and fifty four concrete caisson. So those are. Vertical drilled shafts into the ground. With rebar and poor concrete. Vertically into the ground. And they would be in rows throughout the slight, the slide area placed ten to twelve feet on center. Each caisson would need to be about five to six feet in diameter and drilled to depths that range from hundred. To a hundred and eighty five feet to get into the bedrock and pass the slide plane. In addition to that, in order to develop those caissons. It would require grading for fifteen to twenty foot wide access roads and slope cutbacks for safety. Worker safety and to be used as drilling platforms so the equipment can get up there on a level surface and drill the holes. That grading is estimated approximately about a hundred and twenty seven thousand cubic yards of excavated material and. The spoils of that which would need to be exported, um the rest would be uh returned and uh restored. But the export from the spoils would be fifty five thousand square feet, uh almost fifty six thousand square feet. And this alternative, this uh. Design method would cost approximately a hundred and thirteen point seven million. So if we look at the diagram here and they came up with this schematic. That described. What what this uh this kind of alternative for the best case scenario is. You can see on here, this blue dotted line is the approximate limits of grade grading landslide mitigation. So you can see graphically now. How the caisson arrays are kind of. Throughout the development. Spaced and um at certain intervals, um the disturbed area. Since they're separated is less though, it's about nine acres. And it'll affect approximately thirty four trees, thirty of which are removals and four would be encroachments. We already mentioned the amount of grading, but those almost fifty six thousand cubic yards would result in about. Two thousand seven hundred ninety three truck trips approximately, based on our calculation. As I mentioned, the graded areas would be restored and replanted with native plants, much in the same way. You know, as the as the current proposal. But there are temporary impacts now created by stabilizing this in a different way still. Grading of the roads, grading for the caissons. So that's also something that's fairly similar to the current proposal. And that less comprehensive strategy unfortunately will also lead to ongoing. Issues. So superficial instability, that problem won't be cured. The only way to cure that is to really remove and recompact that material. So those instill in surface superficial instability issues. Would lead to. Other maintenance problems, right? The the need to construct additional debris and flood control devices to catch that material. And the continual maintenance and ongoing repair of those as slides occur because they can be damaged. Also, so that maintenance could be extensive. It'll be periodic for sure. But it could be extensive and. For some of the larger slope failures. Those have to be repaired. So as they occur, so you don't all just clean out the material that that that. Flow down the hillside. Now you have to get machinery up here to fix that slide. And that kind of up and down process over time. Will result in ongoing scarring of the hillside and any mitigation efforts that you put in here for even a version like this. Could be lost over time or or need to be continuously repaired. And um for typical landslides, those aren't things that that really come back to. Review bodies, they're handled through our public works department. And um restored to the best of our abilities. So we lose the ability to. In a way to to kind of dictate what kind of mitigation can go in there. And so. Potentially that that ongoing mitigation could result in a less uh desirable. Habitat area up here. So um. The other issue that I want to talk about is how development is usually. The other issue that I want to talk about is how development is usually placed because. Buildings are typically placed on compacted material to get competent foundations. And since there is no grading proposed with alternative four. And I'm going to float in here where the approximate boundaries of that alternative four are. Um, that development is going to be put on unconsolidated material. It won't be removed and recompacted to a compaction that that won't allow for settlement. So the settlement issues that we talked about. Are the fact that over time, earth will compact slowly and not uniformly. So that will result in ongoing damage. First of all, the the structure will have to be designed. To try to withstand some of that. And then over time, they'll get to the point where they fail. And start cracking and whatnot. Um, I know we have a house with some. Walls that are cracking because of settlement and some patio areas. So and I think, uh, you know, I think folks are. Pretty familiar with what happens when cracks cracking occurs on properties and that kind of maintenance issue. Um, so the buildings themselves can can be cited on caisson foundations and they'll be relatively stable, but. All of the other site features, your your roads, your sidewalks, parking areas, swimming pools even. Infrastructure that will have to be designed to resist that cracking and may lose that battle over time. So uh even this kind of model isn't ideal. So ultimately, we determined that. Alternative four was unfeasible. And for a nu- number of reasons, really. Um. Mostly is ge- geotechnically unsafe still. Grossly and superficially. Um, grossly more for the alternative for without the grading and superficially. Um, for uh the caisson option. And you risk property damage. And occupant's safety. So uh those 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 neither of those options could be recommended by the consultants. Um. And then. Obviously, I mentioned the slumping, the superficial instability issues, slumping, sluffing, sliding erosion. Um. Then really, what are we gaining out of it? As well, if we use the best case scenario with the caissons, it still is going to scar up the hillside. And and results in us having to mitigate for that. Um, so those are your visual and your biological impacts again. Um, then we talked about the soil compaction issues and the compressibility and the cracking. Um, so from maintenance standpoints, it's not ideal. Um, it doesn't balance the earthwork on the site. And so now we're we're into where we need truck trips out of the site. And then we mentioned the cost. Um. And cost isn't the primary driving factor, but. It would be a cost of one hundred and thirteen point seven million. Compared to what a permanent solution would give us at nine point three two. So. We're not really buying that much. That's better for a lot more money. So ultimately, you know, it doesn't really satisfy a project goal of being financially viable. Um, and then uh other smaller issues, it didn't include a pocket park, which is one of the project. Uh, components that are proposed, and it doesn't fully get mitigate the slide, which was another project component. So now we'll get a little bit into oak trees and I won't spend too much time on them. Um, the pre-fire, the pre-Woolsey fire condition, two hundred and six oak trees. We mentioned one hundred and sixty one would be preserved, um, landslide remediation would remove about forty of those. Um. Five oak trees were removed that were down in the in the the eleven acre footprint area and five would be encroached upon. That total mitigation that I was mentioning earlier is one thousand four hundred and seventeen and a half inches. And um. The mitigation, as it's written in the EIR, is to um not only mitigate consistent with our. Um, code require oak tree ordinance requirements. But also to plant them in mosaic patterns that would mimic. Uh, oak woodlands that would potentially be lost. So the applicant submitted an assessment that looked at the oak trees after the Woolsey fire. And noted the following. Of those two hundred and six trees. Eight of them sustained only minor finer minor fire damage. Twenty one sustained moderate fire damage and the bulk of them, one hundred and seventy seven sustained severe fire damage. With some of those being dead. It was noted that the recovery will vary from tree to tree. Um, so some can recover, some won't recover, some will try to and maybe get. Um, finished off by diseases. So it kind of rests on their ability to resist diseases, a lot of them. Um, and then of the forty that needed removal due to the landslide repair, these are the ones on the hillside. And I I remember in twenty two thousand nineteen. Um, there was concern about removing oak woodlands from that. And so unfortunately, what the Woolsey fire did was severely damage all forty of those. Um. So two of them were noted as being dead and six were killed above ground, but have a little bit of root sprouting. And then seventeen had structural damage. So that structural damage could could be severe enough that the tree just fails over time or. Or uh perhaps it could spring back from that. So there's a wide uh array there of of possibilities. Um. But really, the point to this is is just to kind of note the condition post Woolsey as we think about the resource that's up there. But as we approach it. Um, the oak tree mitigation will remain as if the Woolsey fire never happened. So a potential benefit to that, should we approve this and and the the created. Landslide remediation occur. Is that the restoration effort may actually aid and speed up. Uh, putting functional oak woodlands back in that area. Compared to letting it kind of rebound naturally. And now uh we're going to ask our environmental consultants at Ringcon, I believe Joe Power was going to be the one to start the presentation, talk about. The amended final EIR and uh Joe, if you will, let me know, since I'm controlling this PowerPoint, let me know when to move to the next slide, please.
Will do. Thanks, Glenn. Uh, Joe Power here from Ringcon Consultants. Hope everybody can hear me. Uh, Glenn, we can go on to the next slide already. Um. Yeah, uh, this, I'm going to talk a little bit about the EIR. Now, a lot of the things I'm going to be talking about are kind of. Repeats of some of the things Glenn covered, so I'll try not to repeat the same same things, but there are, there is some new information about the EIR that I want to. I want to discuss as well. Now, what we have before you is what we're calling an amended final EIR. As many of you recall, the commission directed the applicant and staff. Uh, to further evaluate alternative post-project. And provide additional information about the feasibility of providing of building a a project with more limited landslide remediation back in July of uh twenty nineteen. So based on that direction, we've modified the EIR to. Do a reassessment of the feasibility of alternative four, as Glenn has discussed, add an old, an old new alternative five to replace alternative four. And then a couple of other things we've done, not because they're necessarily required by CEQA. Uh, under, since this EIR had been completed uh some time ago or initiated some time ago. We also added a new vehicle miles traveled analysis to the transportation discussion. Consistent with the current CEQA guidelines and consistent with a change to state law that occurred since the preparation of the original EIR. And then we also updated the level of service traffic analysis. To reflect current conditions, just because the city's cumulative project list and background conditions had changed a little bit. Since the time, since the last time we we convened on this project. Next slide, please, Glenn. Now, based on the planning commission's request, the IR again needed to be amended to include. Additional information concerning the infeasibility of alternative four, a lot of the information that Glenn just went over. And consider again this new project alternative that we're calling alternative five to replace the now rejected alternative four. Next slide, please, Glenn. Now, the next question before us, we knew that was the information we needed to add. The question before us then became, well, what do we need to do with the EIR once we've added this information? Can we just go come back before the commission or do we need to recirculate the document to get additional public input? Uh, the city decided to take a cautious approach and go ahead and recirculate the document. As you can see, the reasons that you would recirculate a document there, it it's if you have significant new information that's added to the EIR. And that if that information would change the EIR in such a way that it that not cert recirculating would deprive the public of. An opportunity to comment on substantial substantial new information. Now, one of the per the CEQA guidelines, one of the specific reasons to recirculate an EIR. Is the identification of a new project alternative. Uh, and since we did have a new alternative, alternative five, that really was the impetus for deciding to recirculate. Next slide, please, Glenn. So then what's the process for recirculating? Well, it's it's pretty much the same as as the normal process for any EIR. However, because the impetus for recirculation was the new information about alternatives. We were able to limit the recirculation to just the alternative section. Uh, because the CEQA guidelines indicate that you are do not have to recirculate everything if all your amending in a substantial way is. One or two sections. In this case, it was just alternatives. As I noted before, we did also do some additional transportation analysis, not necessarily required. For this particular project under the circumstance, but in the interest of full disclosure, we decided to. Again, add that vehicle miles traveled analysis, update the level of servants analysis and recirculate the transportation section along with alternatives. Now, the process was just to prepare that amended draft EIR, file a notice of completion, just as we would with any other circulated document. And again, you can see the sections there that we recirculated, we go through the public review period, in this case fifty two days, exceeding the state requirement. Of forty five, and then we prepared an amended finally, I are that included responses to comments on the additional letters we received. Uh, on the recirculated draft. And then we prepared the findings, and here we are tonight with public hearings for the city to make a decision on the project. Uh, with that, I'm going to hand it to Matt Hawley of LGC Valley to talk a little bit about the geotechnical analysis that we did as part of the EIR. And then it'll come back to me to finish up the discussion of the of the rest of the EIR.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Next slide, please. Thank you, Glenn. And I'd like to say, Glenn, I think you did a great job with the geology section in there previously, so kudos. Um, I am Matthew Holly with LGC Valley. Um, and I did a geotechnical peer review of the reports for the project site. Um, the reports dated basically from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty. And included a variety of different geotechnical consultants. Um, as part of my work, I reviewed all the geologic and geotechnical reports, their maps and other similar documents. Um, that were in their references that I also reviewed as well for overall comprehension. I also did a site visit to make sure that I agreed with the overall geologic map um as presented. Um, my basic uh scope was to review. The uh geotechnical companies, the various reports, their scope of work. Um, for basic logic to make sure that it uh is within the standard of practice and every report was. Um, I reviewed the data set contained within each of the reports, including um every single excavation from borings. Uh, to test pits. Um, all across the site. I then reviewed the geologic models as presented by the various consultants. Um, from their geologic map and their interpretations on the cross-sections that probably many of you have seen that they prepared for the site. And uh within the report, their hypotheses that they came for uh deduced from that work. Um, from there, they basically got their their conclusions and opinions. Um, of the geology and the geotechnical conditions at the site. For the subject alternatives, they provided geotechnical recommendations and I reviewed all of those. Uh, with respect to uh logic to make sure that uh it fit the data set and the geologic model. That they presented in the report and all the reports did do that. Um, in the end, um, the feasibility, I looked at the feasibility of the proposed project and all the alternatives. And their potential impacts, both short term and long term, short term typically meaning. Um, during construction and then long term meanings for the life of the project. Uh, next slide, please. So from the my findings, um, basically, um, project alternatives two, three and five are feasible. And in my opinion, they're the best options for site development. Um, alternative four is originally designed. Um, which attempts to avoid the condition. And and put a development there. Uh, is not is not ideal, it's not the uh direction that should be gone, it would put the development at risk. It's, in my opinion, far too risky. The alternative to uh alternative four with the array of drilled caissons. I think is a difficult alternative because it doesn't. Define the landslide very well as it currently sits, and it could still impact a development down below it through superficial instability. Um, I don't think that alternative four. Um, provides the same level of assurance against all the geologic hazards that are known out there as alternatives two, three and five. Um, the West Village geotechnical reports. Uh, prepared for the project and the alternatives, they are comprehensive, they are accurate. And they are reliable. Um, for the purposes of evaluating the geotechnical feasibility and environmental impacts. Um, and I think it's a. Appropriate for the subject project, its alternatives at the current stage of the planning process and under CEQA. Um, that's pretty much it for me. Back to Joe.
Thank you, Matt. I remember to turn my camera on this time. Um, it. So back to me, uh, next slide, yeah, Glenn with alternatives. Uh, so as has been discussed pretty thoroughly, we we conducted a comprehensive reassessment. Of the feasibility of alternative four in in response to the planning commission's request. Uh, we looked at the the various options that have been described already, including the no landslide stabilization, which. As has been discussed, would result in substantial ongoing risk. Uh, and we also looked at this uh drilled caisson option, but for the reasons that Glenn described, and you can see listed here. Uh, we decided that 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 option was was really not desirable either. Let's go on to the next slide, Glenn. So based on all of that information, we concluded again that alternative four. Which we previously thought was at least a physically feasible alternative, if if not necessarily a desirable one from the applicant standpoint. We have concluded now that that's really not feasible. So that alternative got moved to a section of the alternative section called. Alternatives considered but rejected. Again, for the reasons that have already been described in detail tonight. So since that alternative went away, we added an alternative five that would. At least that partially addressed some of the concerns about. A re- uh about the landslide remediation and the size of the project. So that alternative. Uh, includes thirty four fewer residential units than the proposed project, so one hundred forty six instead of one hundred eighty. Includes seven more buildings, but it moves those buildings farther from Los Virginus Road and from. The adjacent colonies, so it's about sixty five feet further away from the the most from the nearest residences. Now, this alternative would address in part, but not completely. The project's significant unavoidable aesthetic impact related to the change in visual character. That impact would remain significant, but it would be reduced to a degree, and this alternative would continue to address. Uh, the landslide condition as would the proposed project. Next slide, please, Glenn. Now, as I mentioned before, we, though not required. As part of the recirculation, because we were recirculating the document in the interest of full disclosure. We decided to do two things with with respect to transportation. One was to include a new vehicle miles traveled again, VMT analysis. This requirement, the shift from looking primarily at level of service. This requirement, the shift from looking primarily at level of service to looking primarily at VMT in SEQA transportation analyses, this occurred into 2018. This is statewide and now all EIRs are supposed to consider VMT rather than the level of service. Because this project did not had was already kind of had been in process and the application that filed well before that, we don't think there was a specific requirement to add the VMT. But again, just to be thorough, we went ahead and did that. In addition, we updated the level of service analysis that had been conducted as part of the previous EIR to reflect the new cumulus projects and the change in baseline conditions. Now, the analysis of both the VMT and the updated LOS analysis both concluded that there were no new significant effects, in fact, no significant impacts at all with respect to transportation. So there was no change in our conclusions or any need to, again, any specific requirement based on that information to recirculate those particular sections. I also just want to mention that Sarah Brandonberg from Ferrin Pierce and Scott Schell from ETE are both here to just to answer specific questions about the VMT and LOS analyses. Next section, please. SEQA only requires, as I mentioned, the city to recirculate sections that are being changed substantially and then only requires the city to respond to comments on the sections that had actually been recirculated. In this case, again, alternatives and transportation. Nevertheless, the city received a number of comments regarding other issues and including a number about biological resources, including a pretty detailed letter from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Again, although not necessarily required that to to respond, the city wanted to be thorough and in in their consideration of all of the comments. So we did prepare responses to many of the comments from Fish and Wildlife and others. And again, specifically about the issue of biological resources in particular. As a result of all of the comments and the responses there, too, we did make some minor clarifications to both the analyses and some of the mitigation measures contained in the biological resources sections. But we do not feel that any of those revisions changed the EIR conclusions or involved any significant new information. In other words, any new significant impacts that hadn't already been disclosed. So we do not believe that the changes we've made to the biological resources section necessitate further recirculation of the EIR. Next slide, please. And then last one for me, just what is included in the amended file EIR? It includes the following, the sections of the draft EIR that were not recirculated. And those specifically include aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology and water quality, land use, noise and vibration, public service utilities and other SEQA considerations. It also includes the recirculated draft EIR sections, which were the introduction project description, plus the environmental setting, the transportation analysis and the alternatives analysis, plus all of the associated appendices, which include, again, updated traffic and VNT analyses, updated geotechnical studies, an updated biological resources report and some updated air quality and GH greenhouse gas modeling specifically for alternative five. It also includes comments and responses to the original draft EIR that were given to the planning commission for their consideration in the last iteration of the EIR, comments and responses on the recirculated sections of the draft EIR. And lastly, an updated mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So that is it for me. Then I think it goes to Tom now to talk about some housing issues. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. So the baton has been handed off to me on, and I'll briefly cover housing. We'll look at the housing element and the regional housing needs assessment, Housing Accountability Act, the no net loss requirement under state law and the implications from all those. Next slide, please. So in terms of the general plan and the housing element, under the current one, which is the fifth regional housing needs assessment cycle, 2014 through 2021, it ends later this year. This project site is one of the ones that is identified for housing to meet the city's share of the reina. It's one of only three throughout the city of vacant sites that were designated for multifamily housing. This site is designated, as you know, to accommodate 180 multifamily housing units. Those 180 multifamily housing units are furthermore accounted on to supply theoretically 180 moderate and low income residential housing units. I say theoretically because that's based on a allowance under HCD's rules that were in place for the preparation of the fourth and fifth cycle housing elements. That if you had 20 unit per acre densities, they considered that by default adequate to accommodate more affordable housing categories. And so that's why they count towards our arena in the current cycle to that level. That's going to be important in a little later. The project will provide 180 housing units consistent with that, including 18 that would be affordable with deed restriction to 55 years. And in that fashion, then the project is consistent with the city's general plan, both from a land use standpoint, but more particularly here with the city's housing element. Next slide, please. So the next item that covers the California Housing Accountability Act. Under that, the city cannot deny or reduce the density of or render in feasible sort of, in essence, denying some other way, a housing project that is consistent with applicable objective general plan zoning and subdivision standards and criteria, including design review, unless both of the following findings can be made based on a preponderance of the evidence. And I'll let, if that comes up as a question, Matt Summers explain why that's important. One, if approved or approved at a lower density and in that sense, in the event of a complete denial, the project will have a specific adverse impact on public health or safety. It'd have to be a finding that the approved project would would have an adverse effect. Secondly, that there is no feasible way to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the adverse impact other than to disapprove the project or develop at a lower density. Because the residential component of the project encompasses at least two thirds of the 11 acre project area, this project meets the state's definition of housing project subject to the Housing Accountability Act. Next slide, please. Another key government requirement under California law is Government Code Section 65863, which requires each local jurisdiction to ensure that its housing element can accommodate at all times throughout the planning period its remaining unmet share of the reina. Any action to reduce the residential density of a parcel must be accompanied by written findings documenting that the reduction of residential density is consistent with the general plan, including the housing element. And that the remaining sites identified in in the general plan, housing element, are suitable for development and adequate to meet the jurisdiction's allocated share of reina. This finding is required to include a quantification of the remaining need by income category and capacity of the jurisdiction's remaining sites by income category. Staff's analysis demonstrates that presently, the city has enough of a buffer to accommodate the allocated share of reina without this project site for the current planning period. But that's true only for, and I'll emphasize, the current reina fifth cycle, housing element planning period, which ends later this year. Next slide, please. So that leads us to the next consideration, at least chronologically, I suppose, and the next set of rules and requirements, which will all be accomplished through this, what we're working on now. And you all have heard some updates on it from staff, which is the sixth regional housing needs allocation cycle and the housing elements have to be prepared consistent with that. The subject property is specifically identified in our housing element is providing 180 units, as you know, as and we talked about. And therefore, denial of project will affect our efforts to adopt and certify the sixth cycle housing element, especially in wake of more strict qualifying housing site identification criteria. Now, specifically, as I mentioned, this property has been identified in our last two elements as adequate to accommodate 120 very low and low income units towards our very low and low regional housing needs allocation. The preponderance, in fact, of that, 120 of 141 units, as well as 60 units towards the city's moderate income subcomponent of our regional housing needs allocation. And those were based on, as I mentioned, a 20 unit per acre default density rule that was accommodated through HCD for those two planning cycles. However, that default density presumption no longer applies in this new reina cycle. And as such, the city would have to identify this as one to accommodate a portion of our new reina requirement. State housing and community development will mostly require the site to be developed by right. That means not going to public hearings for a consideration through what's known as a discretionary process. And it'd have to have a minimum 20 unit. This time, notice I'm saying minimum. Those previous housing cycles allowed for by that default density rule, a maximum 20 unit per acre limit to actually count towards the default density and still be deemed adequate for affordable housing. Now, it will be by right, minimum 20 unit per acre to be able to count for that. And with at least 20% having to be deed restricted affordable units. Conversely, if this site would not be carried over, identified again as a site for a portion of our new six cycle reina, then other properties throughout the city will have to be designated for housing and designated at high density multifamily to accommodate the necessary residential units. Next slide, please. All right, so that that's the housing side of it. I think Glenn's now going to walk you through the details of what alternative five is really about, some of it was already talked about by Joe, but here, some of the specifics are in here.
Glenn? Thank you, Tom. And just real quickly to housing, before I get an alternative five, just want to note that as of the discussions right now, this site is being considered in the next cycle. So some of what Tom just mentioned could 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 have to come true. But let me get into alternative five here.
Sorry, if I could jump in there real quick, just a note for those who who may not have been able to participate in all of the ongoing public hearings regarding the sixth cycle housing element, no decisions have yet been made in any final fashion. The planning commission and the city council still retain the full discretion for structuring the sixth cycle, the next housing element, but in so doing, should be aware of the implications of this discussion and this project. But I want to just emphasize that no, nothing is set in stone yet as to the sixth cycle. Sorry to jump in there. Thank you.
Correct. No, you're correct, Matt, and thanks for doing that. Um, but let me just get into alternative five, a little bit more of the specifics. And thank you, Joe, earlier for for mentioning a little bit about this. So it saves a little bit of work for me. Um, but basically, alternative five is in the same footprint as the current proposal. It proposes the same landslide mitigation, grading, cut, cut and fill scheme, right? Balanced on site, includes the same commercial component. But this one, as you can see by the graphic on here, will set the development back from the road. Joe mentioned that earlier, it's 65 feet, which is 15 feet further away from the road and from the colony from the current development and places, as you can see where my cursor is, I hope you guys can all see my cursor as it comes up, a green space, a buffer area. So an ability to put a little bit more landscaping in there. And the pad elevations are more or less similar. The the pads up near the road and the pads up near the rear are basically at the same level as proposed. And I believe the pads in the middle were slightly lower. And the architecture would be the same Monterey style. And 10% of the units would be set aside for low income, just like the current project. So basically, in the EIR's evaluation, this becomes the most environmentally superior alternative. That's not the no development alternative. Because of those increased setbacks really incrementally reduce that visual presence from the scenic corridor. So it will, it it attempts to to lessen that impact. Again, as Joe mentioned earlier. And that reduction in density results in a host of of impacts that are that are less because there's there's less units, less people. And and ultimately, just incrementally less environmental impact in general. I'm going to actually go back aside. I wanted to mention a couple more things that weren't in here. Which is, it now breaks up the development into 22 buildings as opposed to the 15. But the the heights of those buildings are the same as the proposed project. So I apologize for glossing over that. So now we're down to the end here, the decision in front of you tonight. And as you've seen in the staff report and your attachments, we've included two options. Option one is really the the denial option, kind of going in reverse order because we 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 wanted to bring that back and and put that to you as an option, obviously, because we were directed to do so. And we have option, our second option, which is to instead approve the project. And that's in resolution 2021713, that's exhibit A of your report. But really, because of all of what we discussed tonight, our recommendation is really for you guys to reconsider your decision from 2019. Again, you know, and just to remind everyone, we were we were pushed towards an alternative four because there was a hope, I think, shared by all that that somehow we can save the resources that are on the hillside and not really cause those scenic changes and and the they're temporary, of course, in 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 what we've done. But the direction was to go there and and we've consulted with experts and no one's telling us that it's a good idea to do that. And so we're kind of left with 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 what can we do within this triangle that's general plan compliant? So really, you know, that's why we moved alternative forward to the infeasible section. Alternative five looks viable because it 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 activates the the same mitigation strategy that the experts are telling us really needs to be done for any development on that site. And again, I just kind of want to leave you with that thought as you begin to listen to the public and after begin deliberations and whatnot. And so I believe that is all I have. And we are available for questions. It's probably a good idea to ask questions of staff in this presentation for now, in case we have to go back to slides that were presented. So with that, I thank everyone that that, you know, coordinated effort here helped me along with this presentation. And I I'm open and we are all open for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn and all of our staff for such a wonderful presentation, really. So much work put into that. So this is a time for the commissioners to ask clarify So this is a time for the commissioners to ask clarification questions, and if you want to just, you know, sort of raise your hand, I guess, and unmute yourselves. No? Alright. Um, next, then we'd like to hear from the applicant, I believe, maybe it's Mr. Blaine, and I don't know if you need a break, Mr. Blaine, or you want to just proceed.
Actually, I'm sorry.
I didn't see your hand, I'm sorry.
No, I just put it up, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I was fooling around with the unmute.
No problem.
Well, I do have, I do have just a couple of clarification if I might. I guess this goes to Glenn, and then you can direct it to others as necessary. So what I'm wondering about is. In connection with the landslide. And alternative four. And I do remember the three hearings in July 2019 very well, and I did go back and review some, but not all of them. Um, the one of the reasons that we asked alternative four to be reexamined and to see if there could be. Possibly an alternative 4.5 or 4.7. Um, evaluated with. Either less mitigation of the hillside or no mitigation of the hillside was, as Glenn just said in his summary. To to see if there was some way to preserve the hillside. As is, or at least as was prior to. Um, and. What I'm understanding here is that basically no new. Uh, no new investigation was done between July 2019 and April 2021. All that was done was that Leighton. Who is was the consultant retained by the applicant. Took all the data that existed at the time of our July 2019 hearings. Looked at it again or hard. And then the city hired some consultants who peer reviewed what Leighton did and what other people did. So there's no new evidence. That wasn't in existence at the time we looked at this project in July 2019. And my clarification question is, why are we now hearing that there is? Quote, alternative four is far too risky. That there is a. Um, you know, gross and superficial. Situation which sounds highly risky, I'm not getting. Exactly the quotes, but basically what I'm hearing tonight, unlike July of 2019. When I thought I heard. That the risks of the landslide were fairly low, given it's. That it's ancient, given that it hadn't slid much. Given that I think I recall saying landslide. Was not going to even reach Las Verdes Road. Unless there was a hundred year storm and significant seismic activity. So my question is, and this is a very long statement, I apologize for that, is what's new? What 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 did Laten see that no one else saw in July 2019? When we spent three days looking hard at the landslide and the mitigation and alternative for.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna start there, Glenn.
Yeah, now let me go ahead and start and. It has to do with how we looked at that alternative. Um, you're right that there's been no additional studies done, they didn't go out and drill any new test pits or borings. Um, that site is probably one of the most well studied sites in this city. And throughout our history, so the data, I believe, and and I don't want to. Completely talk over the consultants when they come on, they can let us know. Why they didn't recommend any additional testing, I I have a feelings because we had more than adequate information. To render decisions on. But the project that was reviewed in 2019 was not alternative four. It was the current project. So alternative four wasn't a fully vetted alternative. So had the consultants been giving an actual design of alternative four rather than just a basic schematic design? And it was reviewed as a project and not just an an alternative within the environmental impact report. We probably would have come back, in fact, likely would have come back with exactly what you're what we're telling you all tonight. Which is that alternative four was a nonstarter. Um, we alluded to it, we had our concerns with alternative four, and I know we voiced those concerns, but as was. Mentioned in the in the the great deliberation in 2019. Um, the reports didn't exactly say that, and that's why they didn't say that, because we didn't really vet the project, now we have. And now we're coming back to, go ahead, Tom.
Right, so to build on that, and I think I I would argue that. To basically say you do have some new information, which is the additional vetting. And to a substantial degree, I would point to the. What I'll call what we called the best case scenario alternative for. That was not before you. A year and a half ago. That has been. Put together as a way to try to see if there's actually a way to make alternative for work. Which basically is what the commission asked to be done. Is there a way to make alternative for work? And they found a way. I like to be able to say about engineers that if you give them a challenge, they're going to find a way to get it done. That's not the issue, engineers are gonna find a way. Then the question becomes, is it a feasible way economically and otherwise? So they found a way to make alternative for work, at least in terms of the deep slide. It's 454 casons. And if you read the description of that, you can see that that's quite an engineering feat and construction feat to put that into place. And a very expensive one. And so is it doable? Absolutely. Does it address your superficial? Unfortunately, it doesn't do that. So it's not fully adequate, and it does it at 12 times the cost. But we didn't know that.
May I follow up with two more clarifications, questions? The first then is. Is alternative five fully vetted, are we gonna have to go through this again if we decide alternative five is the. Preferred alternative?
Alternative five. You would put in the category of fully vetted because alternative five is. A tweaking, if you will, of the project, just as alternatives two and three are. All of those. The project, alternative two, alternative three and five utilize the same. Uh, landslide remediation approach and technique. To achieve the same level of success on both. Aspects, both superficial and the deep seated slide. Redress. And they both take care of all of the. Uncompacted fill problems in the center of the valley. So they do everything and all of them keep all the material on site, there is no export.
Is it a, is it a fair conclusion? That when I heard the phrase from, I think it was the Leighton gentleman. That there is the risk to life and property is too high not to mitigate the landfill. But that is a, that is a statement that says if there is any development. If there is one building put on the site. That unmitigated landslide produces a risk to life or property. That is too high not to mitigate the landslide, is that a fair conclusion? And the reason and the reason I ask that is because then the logical. Corollary to that conclusion, if that's correct, is, well, how do you minimize the risk to property and life? Well, you you minimize the exposure. I.e. you reduce potentially. Um, the the. Numbers of people or units or infrastructure or whatever, seems to me if the fewer lives, the less risk.
I think it's gonna be important to get the geologists, the geotech experts to come in to to give you a more complete answer to that, but. I'll use perhaps an analogy. To suggest why I would say that's not the approach. That's basically to say if if you're gonna make an on-ramp freeway safer. By design, instead of doing that, you just cut down the number of vehicles so that you injure fewer people or kill fewer people. I'm not sure that would be the acceptable approach, if you know it's dangerous by design, you fix the design.
Thank you for the clarifications, I appreciate it.
Yes, Bob.
I have a question during the presentation. We were told that it would cost about $114 million to do alternative four. Is alternative five in the same ballpark cost wise?
No, no, I don't. Alternative five uses the same landslide remediation approach as the project, which is the nine million and change cost.
Is that okay, Bob?
That's what they use.
Alright.
I'm curious what the difference, the 105 million delta is.
I suggest when the applicant gets to their presentation, their consultant with Leighton can explain. Where that $105 million delta came from and the the genesis of the cost estimate for the casons approach. As the sub-alternative to alternative four, as that was the applicant who produced that number, so we can ask them to justify their explanation.
Thanks, I have a follow up question for from what John was saying. How much land is there adjacent to Las Verdes, for example, that could be built on if the if the landslide weren't touched? I mean safely built on, like the commercial area, I mean near that area.
The conclusion from the geologists, as recommended to you in the various reports tonight, is none.
The entire parcel, both both parcels. Uh, nothing could be built on it.
That's what the geotechnical.
And all that information has been available for years, according to Glenn, because it's such a well studied site. I I'm surprised if all that information was aware available for years to. That. I don't know, it just seems surprising that that was available for so long that. Alternatives were mentioned anyway. Alright, is anybody else have a question? No, so then so then we're going to the applicant, I guess it's to to Mr. Blaine, do you want to begin now? Mr. Blaine?
Thank you, yeah, thank you, I'll go ahead and go ahead and begin.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, Matt, just real real quick, Chair. If you wouldn't mind opening the public hearing.
I believe it was.
I already opened it.
Oh, sorry, that's my mistake, I missed that.
It's okay, it's alright, it's all open.
My name is Matthew Blaine of Ranch Mission Maho, I'm the applicant product manager for the new home company. I want to take this time to thank the commissioners on behalf of the new home company and my consultant team for the opportunity to present today. I'd also like to note that I think staff and their team has done an excellent job in their presentation and work to date, and would like to thank them for their. And their team for those efforts. We'll try not to be redundant on everything that they covered and outlined during their presentation. As previously noted, at the July 2019 hearing, we were requested to provide further analysis of the geotechnical and alternative portions of the EIR. As you can see in the previous presentation, for the last 21 months, we have in great detail further investigated and analyzed these topics. As well as a few others. We have prepared roughly a 40 minute presentation to give further detail to the geological site conditions, and we'll do our best to keep it. Brief but comprehensive and in layman's terms for everyone to understand in the in the clearest form. In attendance today, as you can't see them, my consultant team consists of 15 of the most highly qualified professionals in the disciplines. Of land use, geology, civil engineering, arborist, architecture, biology, agency permitting. Landscape architecture and photo simulation. We stand ready to respond to all questions and to provide clarity to any concerns commissioners or others may have. There has been, in addition to the applicant team. I'd like to introduce Andy Price of Leighton Engineering. Andy joined the team as the applicant geological peer reviewer following the July 2019 hearings. With great misfortune, Ron Schmerling of Geo Labs, the previous geological engineer of record, succumbed to his battle with cancer this last December. With this unfortunate circumstance, Andy has transitioned into the geologist of record. And has taken a lead in the bulk of the presentation here today. As you will see in his presentation in a few minutes, his experience and credentials speak for themselves. Following my introduction here, Michael Shonafeld, the New Home Company's Land Use Council, will provide a brief discussion on pertinent topics related to the matter. And will be followed and concluded with Andy's PowerPoint presentation on geology covering our continued analysis from July to date. Again, we see I'm ready to respond to all inquiries and want to thank the commission, staff, community for their time this evening. And thank you, and with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Michael Shonafeld.
Good evening, members of Mr. Chair, members of the commission. And I want to start my remarks by an apology because I have a very aggressive HVAC system, I hope it's not causing too much feedback, can you all hear me alright? Okay, good. Um, I really want to thank you commissioners for your time. Um, that you dedicate to your city, to the public. I want to thank the staff for one of the best staff reports and presentations I think I've seen in 25 years. One most thorough and thoughtful. But before you tonight, I also just kind of want to frame what's going on, just in the large legal sense, why the law, because it's really important for housing projects like this. What we have before us, what you have before you is a housing project. It's a housing project that's not only consistent with the zoning code of the city of Calabasas and the general plan. But it's enshrined in the general plan, that means at some level, the city already really approved this project in concept. And vetted it through the secret process for that general plan, the housing element. Features this project as a means by which the city will. Make good its commitment to the state of California and to the public. Uh, it's it's delivery of the densities that are featured in that housing element, this project. Is a critical part of that, as as you've heard, it's one of two vacant lots that are featured for this very purpose. So these projects that carry a very special legal status. What that means at the end of the day is that the police powers discretionary powers that decision makers. Are used to wielding aren't there in the same manner, they're they're constrained, they are constrained by the state legislature, and I touch on it only briefly here. But a project, if it's already consistent with the general plan and zoning code. Has already been got, has already gone through the process, and so it lies at the sweet spot of the legislative declarations. Of the need for housing, and the latest of those is the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. Uh, where the state of California, state of California legislature and the governor by signing this law made clear that. These projects need to be approved through the process and are subject only to very strict standards, which were touched on in the presentation. But by staff, and I'll touch on that, but. You know, if if your housing project is already in your general plan and your zoning code and it's consistent. And it gets denied or reduced in density, this is one of the things that that the state legislature said is quote severely impacting the state's economy. And resulting in 140 billion in economic losses every year, it's it's contributing to a crisis level lack of housing in the state. So that's the purpose of those laws. You've heard there are stringent standards, they were discussed in the staff's presentation. There was a mention quote that in order to deny or reduce density of projects like this that are consistent, there has to be a specific adverse impact. On the public health or safety unless this project is denied or reduced in density. And specific adverse impact wasn't touched on what that means, but it's defined as quote. Significant quantifiable standards, policies or conditions as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete. In other words, decision making bodies just can't make up stuff at the hearing, it has to be based upon standards that were already in place, and if you look at the standards that are in place here. They were featured in not one, but two and now three EIRs, the first for your general plan, which concluded that this. There needed to be 180 unit residential development with 155,000 square feet of commercial in this triangle. And declared it to pass muster on safety and hazards, on traffic, on everything, even aesthetics in that EIR. The second EIR approved a project which was our predecessor project, the Canyon Oaks project, that was certified also by the city council. Now we've gone through a very thorough rigorous, not just one round, but two rounds of public comment on the current EIR. And each time these EIRs come up with the same conclusion. Um, if you look at your general plan, you will see that the intention all along was to develop a triangle of 16 acres next to a landslide. If that's the case in your in your general plan, then the general plan has to be consistent with. If that's the case in your, in your general plan, then the general plan has to be consistent with your zoning code. In section seventeen, twenty, one thirty, A six mandates that development achieve a one point five factor of safety against sheer failure. So if you've got a development like that that has to meet one point five next to a landslide, you got it, you got to remediate the landslide. So because we can remediate it, because alternatives to, well, alternative five and the proposed project demonstrate you can remediate it at a price level or cost level that's feasible and gets you to one point five and your, your safety on your, on your superficial failures, then that, that cannot be seen as a basis for denying the project because the specific adverse impacts have to be unmitigatable. In this case, clearly they're, they're mitigating. So you can't use that as a basis for denial or reduction in density. So we're going to hear a lot of comments, I'm sure, tonight, and I'm sure they're going to range over a swath of issues. I, I want to be able to, you know, re- reserve time for a battle of need, you know, or at least answer questions because it's very difficult when you've got so many issues to do justice in responding to them, but we want at least an opportunity to try, although the, the staff report was so thorough and you guys are well served by your staff, that they did a lot of work for us. Right now, we're trying to make good on the direction of the planning commission to really study the alternative five, demonstrate why it's proposed, it, it's better than alternative four because we can actually get a project done there. Alternative four, why it's infeasible. We're still here to advance the proposed project, always have been, and we will continue to do so. And on that note, because it was your direction in July of twenty nineteen, I will let you listen to a very good presentation by Leyton's consultants, Andy Price. You're going to see that he had extensive experience with this very city as its geologist. And I think nobody has, has as much knowledge about this landslide as, as he has. He's, he's seen the borings, he's been, he's looked at it. And, and this is a very well documented, well studied one, as you'll see. So that's all I want to talk about right now, just with a, a special request to be able to answer any points that might come up that we need to respond to that are important for your deliberations. And with that, I will hand the baton off to Andy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before Andy starts, I'm going to share my screen for the PowerPoint presentation here. Do you guys see my screen?
Yes. Okay. And by the way, we will have questions to you after your presentation, or we will have time for that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Andy, I will be in control of PowerPoint, so just let me know when you need me to change the slides.
Very good. Good evening, commissioners and staff. Thank you for the very thorough presentation you made. And to that extent, I apologize if some of this is redundant, but we'll go through it. Again, my name is Andrew Price. I'm a California Certified Engineering Geologist. I am president of Leyton Associates, Inc. I've been in the geotechnical field now for thirty nine years and nearly thirty of those have been with Leyton and Associates. Leyton Associates was the geotechnical consultant for the city of Calabasas from approximately nineteen ninety three to two thousand and five. During that time, I was the engineering geologist for the city for approximately ten years, starting in nineteen ninety three. As part of that, I reviewed New Millennium's proposed project for the subject site along with the Oaks and reviewed the Colony project as the city of Calabasas geotechnical reviewer. Leyton Associates also worked with RJR Engineering and Geo Labs Westlake Village between twenty ten and twenty twelve for another proposed project on the subject site. When the three companies came to consensus of the landslide's characteristics. More recently, Leyton Associates have been the peer review consultants for this proposed project, and we are now becoming consultant of record for the project going forward. Over the past twenty five years or so in my different roles, I've personally been down many of the geologic bucket auger borings, observed the continuous core borings, and observed many of the trenches used to identify the characteristics of the landslide. I'll add to that, that I've also reviewed reports on the project going back to the eighties, coming all the way forward to the current day from the various consultants that have worked on the site. Next slide. With that, give you a tour of the geologic map for the site. This is the map that ultimately was a consensus between RJR, Geo Labs and Leyton. I'm going to walk you through the various elements of the map so you can get a good understanding of the existing site. First, you'll see the projects, proposed project boundaries defined by the dot dash magenta line that moves around the site. North is to the left side of the page. To the west of the proposed project site is the colony in Las Virginas Road. Next, we have the earth units on the site, which are color coded, starting with the artificial fill in brown. This is mostly uncertified fill that was placed here years ago, and you can see the graded slope in flat pad areas that were created then as defined by green contour lines here in the upper half of the fill area. To the right of the fill is, you can see the ground, sorry, green crosshatched areas that represent a temporary debris basin first. And then further to the right, a permanent debris basin related to the colony project. The royal blue area is colluvium. In the pink, you will see the area of the landslide that has been defined by multiple investigations over the years. The red arrows inside the landslide area represent the direction of movement of the landslide. The orange area of canyon of the artificial fill is the alluvium. And then lastly, we have the yellow and lighter blue areas, which represent the Modelo and Calabasas Formation bedrock areas of the site. Crossing through the landslide areas are three dotted blue lines that represent fold axes created by geologic compressive forces of the earth materials at the site. Matt's pointing them out there. The four bold black lines are cross section lines, where if you can imagine a cake and slicing through it, you can see the various vert, layers in the vertical cut of cake. The remaining black items on the map represent technical labels, boring locations and trench and test pit locations in exploring the site over the years. Returning to the landslide area for a moment, the landslide area is actually what's called a landslide complex. There are multiple areas within the mapped landslide that you see on the screen that have failed in different locations and different depths at different times. And in addition to the landslide fair, the entire mapped area along the basal rupture service. I'll add to that, that during the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven investigation of the site by the three companies, we saw tension cracks and scarp areas that had developed on the, on the hillside there that were relatively fresh and new, indicating some movement had occurred in the slide area. As I mentioned earlier, the earth units that make up the landslide mass in the adjacent bedrock area have been folded due to geologic compressive forces in the area. The folding further complicates the geologic conditions at the site and may have contributed to the development of the landslide. Groundwater was often encountered at the site at depth in the canyon bottom, which was the groundwater table. And in many of the borings excavated in the hillside, which represented perched water stuck above confining bed, bedrock layers that held the water until the hillside was opened by the borings or trenches. All of these conditions vary by location in the landslide area. They may change over time and the combination of conditions make for a complicated geologic environment. Descriptive names of the landslide can be varied, but the current state of landslide would be considered inactive, or you could describe it as dormant because there's no visually observable movement occurring at this time. As we will discuss, it is within the realm of possibilities that the landslide could reactivate at any time and affect the proposed development, if not designed for appropriately, due to the different conditions that might arise. We can go to the next slide now. These are cross sections two, three, four and five that I'm going to show briefly. Two is closest to the colony and five is the furthest to the east. Here you can see the landslide again in pink, the dash line representing the basal rupture surface of the entire landslide mass. Below that is the blue bedrock of the Calabasas Formation. And to the left side of the screen, you can see the artificial fill in brown overlaying the alluvium, which sits on top of the bedrock. Next slide. Section three is the same thing. Again, the, the pink areas, the slide, blue is the bedrock and the fill and alluvium remain the same colors. In both sections, two and three, you can see that the landslide toe of the landslide crops out on the surface. Going to section four. Again, the same elements of the, of this cross section. However, here you can see that the landslide toe is buried by the alluvium in the canyon bottom. And you can also see that the Modelo Formation in yellow is appeared up on top of the ridge. And finally, going to cross section five, you can see that the landslide has been buried under the alluvium and all the rest of the conditions are generally the same. Going on to the next slide. This is the proposed project. This figure illustrates the project boundaries, the proposed project and building pad area, where you see the buildings and roads and whatnot. And also the approximate limits of the grading to stabilize landslide area. And that is defined by the lighter green with all the trees that are illustrated on it. Also, you can see the existing permanent debris basin, which remains after the project is completed and the new proposed debris basin to the far east of the project, which will be built as part of the project. The landslide itself is being removed and replaced with compacted engineered fill with subdrains to remove groundwater where present. To achieve city requirements and the industry standard of care, project slope stability must achieve a minimum factor of safety for gross, which is the overall static stability of the whole landslide mass. Surficial, which is the upper five to six feet of material across the landslide mass and pseudo static was represents during a seismic shaking event. The slope stability factor of safeties of one point five, one point five and one point one respectively. I'll add to that, that during construction, there's something called temporary stability that needs to reach a factor of safety of one point two five to be safely done. On the next slide, we'll see cross section four that we saw before. The main difference here is that the building area and the proposed grades are shown in green. So on the far left, you can see the, the extent of the building pad area there, and it's, it's basically a flat pad. And then the line, green line going up the hill more or less mimics the ground surface after the slide has been removed and repaired. And the magenta color there is the back cut of the slide because we cannot go off property to remove the entire slide. We had to do a back cut and leave a portion of the slide in place that will be buttressed by the entire replacement fill. I'm going to the next slide, then you can see the final product. All of the compressible soil at the bottom of the hill beneath the building pad has been removed and replaced with artificial fill that's certified. And then same with the landslide mass going up the hillside. All that is represented by the diamond or diagonally slashed area represented as CAF. The orange dots are this, just an example of the subdrains that would cross horizontally through the slide cleanout area to drain water and would be placed every fifteen to thirty feet, along with special areas where water is encountered during grading. Going to the next slide, we have the considered but rejected West Village Alternative Four. This moves the proposed project to the north, but still located in the proximity of the toe of the existing landslide with no mitigation of the landslide. Gross stability of the landslide does not meet the factor of safety of one point five needed to meet city requirements or design level standard of care, and that's in its current state today. Failure of the landslide could occur and have severe adverse effects on the proposed development, as was discussed previously. Surficial instability of landslide mass could impose, or sorry, could impact the proposed project. Buildings and other structures would have to be supported by deep foundations and or mat foundations due to the left in place compressible soils underneath the building pad. And concrete slabs, pavements, flatwork, pools, walls and fences and other amenities would have to be repaired and or replaced regularly in perpetuity due to the compressible and expanses soil conditions that would be left unmitigated. The conclusion from all of that is that alternative four is not feasible. Going to the next slide. This is a example that Geo Labs came up with, showing what a potential failure hazard area for alternative four could look like. In this case, the landslide could fail grossly, superficially, or due to a seismic event. Conditions that would contribute to slope failure include wet conditions, superficially or at depth, earthquake, fires and manmade activities. If the landslide fails or large scale superficial instability were to occur during storm events, the failed soil and mud would move into the canyon bottom, potentially blocking canyon drainage. Drainage water from up canyon would eventually erode through the failed material and ca- carry that material down canyon. The volume of failed material could fill the existing debris basin and ultimately overflow or go around the debris basin and move towards Las Virginas Road. Next slide. These are examples of large scale superficial instability and what can result. In this case, we have burn areas on the natural canyon slopes that became saturated during winter rains that resulted in mud flood, mudslides coming down the hills. The mudslides impacted homes, property and the road in the canyon, as you can see there by those pictures. And mandatory evacuation of homes was necessary, but fortunately, there were no significant injuries in this case. And going to the next slide, the findings and conclusions from this. Alternative four is infeasible because it leaves the landslide in place. It cannot achieve the required factor of safety for slope stability. It does not protect the proposed project from slope instability and does not mitigate for compressible soils left beneath the building pad. The proposed project, and I'll add to this, alternatives two, three and five would all mitigate gross and superficial landslide hazards and compressible soil issues below the building pad area. And that completes the presentation. This is a slide here that was put together just defining the slope stability and what a factor of safety is. We kind of went through this earlier, but gross stability, the static stability of any slope in the immediate proximity of project, all depths and all locations. Surface stability is the stability of soils in the upper five feet below the ground surface in the immediate proximity of the project. And pseudo static stability, stability of the slopes in the immediate proximity of project during a seismic shaking due to an earthquake. Sub stability analyses are performed considering geologic structure, earth unit strengths, groundwater and slope topography, both existing or graded. The results of the slope stability analysis are indicated in terms of factor of safety. As an example, a minimum factor of safety of 1.5 generally indicates that resisting forces are at least 1.5 times greater than the slope forces acting downhill in the direction considering geologic and geotechnical conditions. If we want to go on, you saw this slide earlier, this is the mitigation that we looked at considering an alternative for building pad area. And trying to think of a way to stabilize the hill without removing the landslide in its entirety and replacing it with compacted fill and sub drains. The diagram here illustrates construction areas, including access roads, working bench areas, bench back cuts and case on drilling and construction locations. There are 454 caissons that consist of reinforced concrete drilled piles each six feet in diameter and 12 feet on center to center. Grading to construct the case on system results in a net export of almost 56,000 yards. Additional mitigation will be required to address superficial slopes instability, superficial drainage and repair of slope where the construction work occurred. Regular and ongoing maintenance and repair of the slope will be required to address official instability in the future. And finally, based on our experience, this method of stabilization is very expensive and does not include the cost for superficial instability and mitigation and long term maintenance.
To to answer the commissioner's previous question of the cost difference between the two deltas. The roughly just under $10 million cost is for the application and the other alternatives that mitigate the landslide. 113 plus is this structural engineer plan here of all of these caissons. In order to, as as previously mentioned, address the gross stability. What that cost does not analyze are a final, a final engineering document that may require additional costs as well as a superficial response such as diversion walls and maintenance in perpetuity. So just elaborate on that a little bit.
And just I'll add to that, that is more or less the delta between the cost of this plan. Not including superficial stability mitigation and the grading costs. So moving to the next slide, this is cross section four again, taking a look at this mitigation method. In blue, you can see the alternative for building pad area. And the grade, the pad grade that's represented there. You see the grade areas on the surface of the landslide, those are the excavations and back cuts for each of the benches in this particular clay location where alternative, I'm sorry, cross section four crosses the site. And then each of the red columns represents individual drilled shafts in each of the bench locations along that cross section line. Lastly, the findings and conditions of alternative for building pad with slope mitigation. Even with a case on mitigation approach, sorry for the spelling error there. You cannot mitigate potential superficial instability and additional mitigation measures would be required. It would still require extensive and significant land form alteration to achieve all the construction bench work. It would require significant soils export and it would require perpetual maintenance obligations. It finally, it would require special foundations for buildings and structures, ongoing repair and replacement of pavements, flat work and other structures. And that completes the entirety of the presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Blaine.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Harrison. We stand, I I could stop sharing or if commissioners have questions, I could certainly go back to the PowerPoint. And we stand ready to answer or provide clarity to anything that the commissioners may have requests on.
Thank you. So commissioners, if you have any questions, just raise your hand or unmute yourselves. I don't see anybody. So if that's the case. The next thing is the public comments, right? And how many people are are participants other than the panelists? Do we know approximately?
And Chair Harrison, in this moment, I'll ask two points. One, Matt, could I ask you to turn off the screen share? Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And two, this will be the point to ask any member of the committee of the public who would like to speak to raise your hand virtually to do so. And that entails either pushing the raise hand button in the Zoom system, or if you're joining us by phone. I believe the it is star nine is the phone key. Yes, star nine is the phone key to use to virtually raise your hand using the computer system, the telephone rather. And I'll and I'll ask folks who want to speak to do that now. And then Jaclyn or Michael Klein will manage bringing folks in to speak. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. And when the and when the speakers do speak, just give us your name, if you could, and your place, your city of residence and if you simply agree with one of the previous speakers, you can just say so. You don't need to take the full two minutes, but you do have the two minutes. So and at some point we may want to break for the evening or or something like that. Just we'll see how it goes. So anyway, go ahead. Who's handling this? Is it Michael or Jaclyn or?
But there is one speaker ready. Her name's Priscilla.
Oh, thanks, Otana Lewis. Thank you. I'm having trouble hearing Priscilla. I don't know if anybody else is.
Yes, I I couldn't quite hear Ms. Lee either.
Perhaps she can call back on a phone or something and do it that way. Because I still can't quite make out what she's anything she's saying. Sorry.
I will move along to the next speaker.
Sorry, Priscilla. Okay.
You may begin.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Diana Coronado, representing the Building Industry Association with many builders and subcontractors in the city of Calabasas. The I A is a nonprofit representing these folks affiliated with Building Housing for All. On behalf of our members, we would like to speak in support of the West Village Housing Project. We hope the commission truly considers the reality that is being shaped when a well crafted and positively intentioned housing project is approved. The New Home Company has done their due diligence to address the city and the community concerns. This project is being built within the allowable guidelines of the city's recent general plan updates as well as the city's current housing element study, as you heard. These are all positive metrics and seemingly consistent with the goals of the city and the state's Housing Accountability Act. We hope to point to the city of Calabasas as an example of working with the development community to get to a place where housing can in fact be produced. This will give other builders a certainty and confidence to evaluate future housing opportunities within the city of Calabasas. The commission has a chance to help meet the city's housing needs. And we encourage you to move that goal forward by approving this project. As you know, California is facing one of the most dramatic housing shortages in the nation. The city of Calabasas alone will be responsible for providing 354 new housing units by 2029, as you heard, projected by the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RENA. The West Village project is a step in the right direction in helping to alleviate this crisis by replacing an underutilized site with homes. The project includes 18 affordable units, 10% of total project footprint preserved for very low income housing. And every new unit of housing in this county is necessary. There are many added benefits for the city that result from the production of housing. This project will strengthen the local economy with new investment and generate revenue for Calabasas. This project will accumulate taxes and fees contributing to city operations and will create construction jobs during this difficult economic condition. Estimates show that for each new unit of housing, at least two jobs are produced. Further, the infusion of work and future residents will help support local businesses. Thank you. That concludes my comments and we urge you to support this housing solution.
Thank you very much. I I had said two minutes for each speaker, so I wonder if you could change that to two instead of what it's seems to be set at.
Unfortunately, I don't have control of the timer, but I can definitely stop it at two. Yes.
Oh, who who has control Zoom?
I believe it's IT.
No, we we don't have a two minutes timer. I saw program for three minutes.
Oh, okay. I don't know how to warn people then, but we'll, I guess we'll just have to muddle through.
If I make a guess, you can recognize that when it says one minute, their time is up.
All right. So all right. So for everyone, you there's it's two minutes, even though the timer says three. So when you get close to, as Tom said, when you get close to one minute, try to wind it up if possible. Thanks very much. Okay.
Very good. Move along to the next one.
Yes, go ahead.
You may speak.
Hi, Frances Salet, resident of Calabasas. Tonight's an exercise in deja vu. Both projects conflict with our municipal codes. This is what our codes require. Hillside development standards state that projects within the hillside areas shall be designed to protect important natural features and to minimize the amount of grading as well as overall project design and layout shall adapt to the natural hillside topography. Proposed development within the scenic corridor shall comply with the city scenic corridor guidelines. And those include grading shall be kept to an absolute minimum. Both projects propose grading of about 2.5 million cubic yards of earth. That's hardly minimal grading. They propose filling in the canyon that's not following natural topography. The CMC also states grading and project design shall address and avoid impacts to habitat linkages and wildlife corridors. Both projects propose reducing our wildlife linkage and corridor by 25%. There is no mitigation that makes up for the loss of that acreage. We know that the CMC defines grading as development. They propose bulldozing a third of the zone to open space that's supposed to be development restricted. The developer claims they're allowed temporary land use, development uses of this land. How is filling in a canyon a temporary use? How's converting natural hillsides into manufactured slopes a temporary use? How are the miles of concrete V ditches temporary? Those are all permanent changes. Manufactured slopes can't be counted as open space, so we lose 20 acres of zoned open space if this is approved. Tonight's presentation just shows that the developer should be focusing on a much smaller project. Just because 16 acres are zoned for development doesn't mean that it's feasible to develop, especially if it requires.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Oh, thanks, Frances.
You may begin, please.
Hi. Hi, my name is Diane Gubin. I live in the Calabasas Highlands. I listened to this entire evening and all I could think of was you guys said no twice. This is like a little kid developer saying daddy, daddy, if I keep asking, I'm begging, will you let me do this? I am very concerned that you guys are not listening to the community. We absolutely do not want this development. This project was denied twice. Nothing has changed. The new proposal has the same concerns as before. The proposed development does not fit the land and it results in these major issues. One, years of grading and destruction of designated open space, which will create significant environmental damage and change the natural hillsides to manufactured slopes with miles of concrete and ditches. Oh, my gosh, yuck. Two, you're going to build multi story residential buildings in a canyon in a high fire zone? And three, you're adding traffic to overburdened roads. We're in a fire zone. I had to evacuate. You could barely get out at that time and you want to add more people in? You're not even talking about adding more roads. So lastly, I'd like to remind you of measure O, which requires a vote of the people. That's all of us to rezone the open space, not just the planning commission. There are empty houses, there are empty offices, I'm sorry, on Calabasas Road, Agora Road. Reason those for housing, you can certainly meet all the city requirements then. Take a parking lot, rebuild in a parking lot. Don't build on our open space. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
You may begin.
Hi, my name is Alex Charen. I'm a partner with the firm of Englander Canadian Allen in Los Angeles and have been assisting the New Home Company in their outreach and advocacy efforts related to the proposed project for the last several months. Over the course of that time, we've engaged with over a dozen state senate and assembly offices in support of the project, including a majority of the senate and assembly housing committees respectively to share our concerns over the city's potential failure to meet current and projected RENA goals and other city density metrics. Several members have voiced their concern that projects such as the one before you tonight are not being assessed adequately against a backdrop of state legislation that mandates greater density. We've also briefed and shared our concerns with the Office of Los Angeles County Supervisor Sheila Kewell, whose housing staff has indicated their alignment with HCD, the state agency, and the concerns raised in their letter sent prior to this hearing. In addition, we have had briefings with staff and very selected officials from the Southern California Association of Governments, all of whom have raised similar concerns and will be sending a letter. Lastly, we have engaged with various NGOs, including YIMBY, both statewide and locally, who will be sending support letters directly to the council and participating in upcoming hearings potentially. The reality is that the proposed project meets and exceeds the state and region's housing goals and the city's potential failure to recognize that puts both the developer and the city itself in a precarious position. We very much look forward to you supporting the project and working with you towards a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
You may begin.
My name is Jeanette Mulkey. I'm a resident of Calabasas. And I just want to remind everybody, 77% of the voters of Calabasas voted no on this builder's project. No on F. This project is not, the new project is not considerably different. And the fact that the staff had decided behind closed doors to work with this developer on a new alternative i- in itself is is very concerning to me that this wasn't brought out until now, just before everybody has to vote on this. The grading of 2.5 million cubic yards of dirt is extremely concerning, especially because many residents have come down with valley fever, which means in the area here locally, there is the fungus that causes valley fever. And the city has not really been very successful in controlling the dirt from previous building or construction sites in recent years. And I strongly recommend that that you all vote no on this project.
Thank you, Jeanette.
You may begin.
Hi, my name is J C Shillen and I am a longtime resident of Calabasas. I live in Stone Creek, across the street from Paxton, down the street from Ron Bell, which is in development and down the street from this West Village property. As I have listened throughout the years and this entire evening, what what hasn't been said is anything regarding the movement of two of over 2 million cubic yards of dirt. How that will affect the environment, the community? How that, why that mitigation is somehow something you can magic wand over on this flawed piece of land? The truth is, is that you've spent an enormous amount of time saying that alternative four isn't feasible, but yet spend zero time talking about how this mitigation is going to be a disaster environmentally and for the community and that it is in open space. Not to mention, not a single word was mentioned once again about the Woolsey Fire, about the high fire severity risk that's here in the community. And it's just, it it's a sales job to And it's just, it's a sales job to sell why this development works for the developer, why the finances work for the developer. But the people are here tonight to remind you that there's a community of people here where this is going to affect us forever. It's not temporary. It's, it's, it's not nothing. It's a huge undertaking and you can't just pretend that it can be done just because you want it to be done. So I really urge you to look much deeper and to really consider that this is not the appropriate project for that piece of land. And please deny it. Thank you.
Thanks, J.C.
You may begin.
Yes, this is Larry Willett. I am a resident of Calabasas. And again, the Woolsey Fire issue really hasn't been addressed tonight. And I think that the general plan that was initiated some time ago didn't really understand what the extent of the fire danger that this area has and what impact it might have. You know, I realize we're saying this, you're saying that all of this fits the general plan, et cetera, et cetera. But I have concerns that the general plan itself was not thought out, thinking about what could happen in the area as more residences were added and so forth. It certainly impacted us during the Woolsey Fire. Many of us, you know, we evacuated. It was difficult getting out. It was hard to, to get around. And adding more residences is not going to alleviate any of that. It's just going to make it much worse. You know, I certainly would urge the commission to think about that and I would urge a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
You may begin speaking.
Hello, this is Denise Miller. I'm a long-term resident of Calabasas, also in Stone Creek, right across the street from Paxton and down the street from Ron Dell, Ron Dell and this project. I keep thinking about, which I also brought up in 2019, that we have municipal codes that need to be followed. Manufactured slopes cannot be counted as open space. That's a very important code in this part. So they're taking open space and they're going to tear it down and put it back as manufactured. That is there's other codes that have been brought up. And I, I'm feeling kind of sad that the, the community has to remind you of the rules, that the staff is not following those rules. We were kind of sad, to be perfectly honest. So the only thing I want to put in, there's a lot of people with a lot of opinions, is that we need to follow our civil codes at least. And a manufactured slope cannot be counted as open space. So we got to figure out if they take that slope out. I don't, I don't know how that works. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Denise.
You may begin.
Hi, my name is Jolie Willett. I live in Calabasas. And I am really frustrated with this whole commission, this whole thing going on for years. The problem I see is the Woolsey Fire issue. We are in a high fire area. I don't know about you folks, but I know we had our homeowner's insurance canceled because we live in a high fire area. Excuse me. That not only are we at risk, we almost lost our home. Fortunately, we didn't. The house is on the other side on Parkmore. There are nine of them that went up. That said, there's also a traffic issue. The traffic is brutal now. We could hardly get out. I can hardly wait to see what's going to happen with 180 minimum new cars if you have 180 new residents. At this point, the fresh, excuse me, the frustration level has gotten to a point that I hope you take it to council and deny this. It is just not a feasible thing for that property at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Jolie.
You may begin.
This is Joanne Suar and I live in Calabasas. I would like to begin by directly quoting Commissioner Mueller from the July 18th, 2019 meeting. He said, and I quote, "The law requires us to approve a project that has the least intrusive impacts on the project site in those areas that are protected and under the zoning in which they are protected." That is your charge. Alternative Four, which met this requirement, which the commission spent hours discussing last time, is now off the table. From the time New Home Company bought this property, they have always been wanting to remediate that landslide to create mega building pads. And now they're back again with the same proposal as before, still calling for destroying the hillsides and canyon, remediating the landslide, grading open space, and moving two and a half million cubic yards of dirt to build those mega pads that I mentioned. The New Home Company's concern about profitability is not your concern tonight. They have options to develop this parcel of land, options that would, and I quote again, "have the least intrusive impacts on the project site and in those areas that are protected." Again, quoting Commissioner Mueller. No one is saying, "Don't build." What is being said is, "Let the land dictate the use." Don't destroy dedicated open space. The New Home Company may not like that, but they knew what the zoning laws and constraints on the property were when they bought it. So I am respectfully asking that you again deny this project. New Homes knows what the community wants, so it's time for them to either figure it out or recognize that they may Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Hi, you may begin.
Hi, this is Ian Mercer, resident of Calabasas. As presented earlier, the core aspect of this development has not substantially changed from the previous rejected projections. Does the council believe that the public opinion has suddenly miraculously evolved to shockingly be accepting of this unchanged application? Have we suddenly all embraced multi-story buildings stuffed into an unsuitable area, destroying the natural environment around it? Are we all, against all logic, supporting a plan which operates at such density as to create massive environmental damage, chaotic levels of traffic, and massively impacting the surrounding residents for an alarmingly extended period of construction? I'm not advocating for zero development on the site. I understand the realities of the situation and the necessity for development to meet the, you know, growing demands, residential or commercial. All I demand is the city find a balanced approach, accepting only requests which make every effort to develop our land in a responsible, balanced, ecologically and socially sophisticated way. And if the zoning demands, you know, demands a level of development which does not meet that type of approach, then the application should be denied and the zoning should be appealed. Lastly, I want to speak to the alarm with which I see the persistence of the developer returning again and again and again to this particular approach without considered revision or even the shallowest attempts at addressing the objections and concerns of the residents of Calabasas. The people of this city hold the city responsible to represent our views and our objections to this development. And we respectfully request that the city pass lasting resolutions, which prevent this insidious persistence from continuously taking up time with the council and continuously ignoring the will of its citizens. Thank you. I relinquish my time.
Thank you, Ian.
Hi, you may begin talking. Teri?
Oh, hey, sorry. I couldn't unmute. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Teresa Brady and, or Teri Brady. And I am the Conservation Chair for the San Fernando Valley Sierra Club. And as such, I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club, San Fernando Valley Group and the Angeles Chapter. We represent 4,000 Sierra Club members living in the valley, many of whom live, work, or play in the city of Calabasas. We recommend that you deny this project. We agree with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Hill the Bay, California Native Plant Society, Calabasas Coalition, and the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. Essentially, the key points are that we would like the planning commission to consider requiring that the project footprint should be reduced to avoid the wetlands as well as the alkalized sink. It should also be redesigned to avoid impacts on the habitat for California red-legged frog, the puma, American badger, and other species of concern. Details about setbacks necessary to accomplish this are in the letter you received from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife in response to the EIR. With the developer having removed Option Four from the table, the only option left that accomplishes these biological objectives is Option One, no development, or to require the developer to come back with another option. Avoidance of the wildlife corridor should be mandated. The developer knew or should have known that the property included a wildlife corridor. The city should be included part of a wildlife corridor. The city should be under no obligation to allow the developer to infringe on the wildlife corridor. Many of these biological resources are so rare, they cannot be expected to be replaced through mitigation. Therefore, as these agents Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look at the letter.
Hi, you may begin talking.
Hi, my name is Joe Cholko. I'm a longtime Calabasas resident. At the July 2019 public hearing for the proposed project, it was determined that the landslide is not a threat to public safety in its current undisturbed state. The city engineer confirmed this. Urban wildfires occur frequently oppose a real public safety threat, yet the EIR doesn't address it or state any mitigation. The project site is burned in an urban wildfire as recently as November 2018. The fire threat is magnified by putting residential buildings in a box canyon. The independent geotechnical peer review by LGC Valley, Inc. states, "We generally conclude that the potential for onsite landslides to impact the adjacent Lost Virginus Road and/or the adjacent Shea Homes property under existing conditions is slight." A magnitude 7.1 earthquake occurred on July 6, 2019. Effects were felt across much of Southern California, but did not result in a significant movement of the landslide on the project site. There is no mention of this fact in the EIR or in tonight's staff presentation. In preparing the EIR, the SEQUA guidelines state that the EIR shall focus on the significant effects on the environment. The significant effects should be discussed with emphasis in proportion to their severity and probability of occurrence. Absent the proposed development, the city would not build concrete V ditch infrastructure on the OSDR-zoned land. It's part of the proposed development. Development's not an allowed use on the OSDR land. Concrete V ditch is not temporary. It's permanent. That's not allowed on OSDR. Bulldozing 20 acres of OSDR land is not allowed. So the proposed project has a significant impact on public safety. It's a basis for denying. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Hi, please unmute yourself.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I want to remind you about global warming and remind you, I am a resident of Calabasas. I forgot to say, I am an architect. I am an urban planner and I am a professor. But if you go in rush hour to 101, you don't need to have any of this expertise. You see the traffic right now at Lost Virginus and 101. So, and you see the impact after this Shea Company buildings and some other buildings in Lost Virginus, you see the traffic. I want to remind you about Measure F, that 70% of us say no. And it was the same, no change. And I want to remind you about this one, that affordable housing, it doesn't work. As I remember, I reviewed the general plan a long time ago. Hopefully changed. They can pay for the $7,000 for each unit to change it from affordable housing. So it's not going to be helped. And my last point is this one. This all discussion, they talk about mitigation, about the environmental impact. But only they said medication. They didn't go through the detail because there is no mitigation. This environmental impact of this project is very high. And other than paying my money, there is no medication. And as you know, our society failed the environment so far, and this fire is the result of our fail. Please help us to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Roya.
Hi, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Alex. I live on Lost Virginus, resident of Calabasas, just down the hill from development. The, the danger of valley fever is pretty real. I've heard somebody mention that before. Myself got sick about three months ago. Still have a hole in my lung. I haven't heard developers say anything about mitigating the circumstance of that particular aspect. And also, I'd like to, second or third or fourth, everybody who spoke about traffic. It seems that the engineering quality of those assessments could be questioned. That's just me.
Alex, are you still there?
Yeah, I really guess what that, yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Hi, you may begin talking.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Paul. Go ahead.
Hi, it's Paul Edelman with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. I think the key thing to know is that you need a new EIR. What you have is one infeasible alternative picked for you and then three alternatives with unavoidable significant impacts. That's an inadequate range of alternatives. Why is the staff pushing this project so hard? It just seems that it's the same thing as we went through in 2019. The way to get out of the, the pressure put on you by the Housing Accountability Act is you can turn down the EIR. That voila, that gets rid of the obligation for, to approve the project as proposed. What you need is a new alternative that works on the flat pad. Go with a bigger setback, raise the pad, tear it out and recompact it to deal with the settlement issue they were talking about. And even fill in the basic toe of the landslide to mitigate some of its force. Think about this. Say you have six acres. You have 180 units divided by that. You can easily get 1,000 square foot pads, two stories, that's 2,000 square feet per unit. And it still leaves you 81,000 square feet to put in roads and landscaping. So there's your, on six, six acres, there's 180 units for you with plenty of room to spare. The project doesn't mention how it will mitigate mountain lion habitat now that that mountain lion population is threatened under the State Endangered Species Act. And most importantly, I think something to say is that the, this landslide, it already slid, is what we heard at the last hearing. And if it's going to slide, it's going to be a blip, not a blob. And the whole thing about mud flows and all that out on Lost Virginus, geez, the whole mountains are subject to that type of thing. So it's all scare tactics. And I hope you just deny the EIR and make it come back with something new or deny the whole project. Let's put this thing out of its misery and move on and let everyone get real with what the facts are. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi, you may begin talking. Please unmute yourself.
This is someone who has to press star nine. This is someone who has to press star nine.
Star six, so unmute yourself.
It's what?
Star six.
Oh, we didn't know that. Star six for a cell?
Yes.
Hope they can hear us.
Or try star nine. I thought it was star nine. That's what the agenda said.
Right.
Caller, can you hear us? Can you please unmute yourself?
I think it's Paul Edelman. I think I went in a second time. I'm happy to testify more if you'd like, but that's
No, Paul, it seems like we have a caller and they are not able to unmute.
Or Tony, is it star nine to raise hand and star six to unmute? Is that it?
That's correct. Star nine is to raise hand and star six is to mute and undo.
Okay, so star six to the caller, if you're able to hear me.
Hi, can you hear us?
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Yes, hi, okay. My name is Greg Byrne. I'm a 24-year resident of Calabasas, and I have 32 years of experience in engineering geology. Last time, this was in front of the Planning Commission, the project was denied. Developer came back with different alternatives, and oddly enough, not surprisingly, has rejected all the alternatives that don't involve full slide remediation. Why? Because the landslide gives this developer his project. Typically, slides are a problem for properties. Developer needs the dirt in the slide to make the super pad. Without the slide repair, he has no material to make the pad. He's using the slide as a reason to do this egregious remedial grading. The geotechnical consultants that provide some outside opinions mentioned the impact of renewed slide movement and mud and debris flow. So what I want to do is talk to you about the geology here. The slide, you'll never find one document on this property that says other than this is a prehistoric or an ancient landslide. It moved thousands of years ago when things were much different around here climatically. The landslide moved, it slid into the canyon, it's resting against the north flank of the canyon or alluvium in the canyon bottom, and is no longer a threat to the public. No one has ever said that this thing has moved again. They say that the slide is a threat to Lost Virginus Road with respect to renewed slide movement and debris flow. This is complete garbage. You look at the directions of slide movement that are on the geological maps, the slide is moving away, obliquely away from the colony and not toward it. The existing debris basin was engineered by the County of Los Angeles years ago. This is not like some place in the San Gabriel Mountains where the debris basins fill up and need maintenance. I have never seen that basin being cleaned out. I've never seen trucks leaving. The basin's never filled up with debris. Also, the geotechnical consultants that worked on the colony also worked on West Village well before the colony. They had all the information, more about the geology than anybody else on this, in this area, and they got the colony. Therefore, that is, there is no issue with renewed slide movement or debris flow. It would have been brought up then, even Lawson, who's been hired to provide Sir, you can warn that your time is up.
Thanks very much, Greg.
Hi, you may begin talking. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Tonia Ari. I'm a long-term resident of Calabasas. And as in accordance with what all of my neighbors are saying, how this project is basically horrendous and horrific, has anyone addressed the traffic problems? This morning at 9:30 a.m. at Agora Road in Lost Virginus, there was a significant accident. We have one fire station here, Fire Station 125, that serves the entire community. We have one sheriff's station that serves Agora Hills, Calabasas, and Malibu. With the increase of first responders, what's going to happen? There's going to be a significant increase in traffic, and again, we're in a fire zone. Another neighbor of mine mentioned the Woosley Fire. I also live on Parkmore. There were seven to nine homes burned. Where were the firefighters? They were gone somewhere else fighting fire up Lost Virginus. These issues really need to be looked at and addressed. When the Rondell project finishes, there's going to be even more people. We are, we live in a bottleneck. If anyone lives anywhere near Agora Road, Lost Virginus, Moreau, coming off of Moreau, you are in a bottleneck. You're stuck. And like my other neighbors said, and referring to other neighbors, people, residents of Calabasas, during the Woosley Fire, we couldn't get out. And there are elderly people that live here. There's an elderly community up on Agora Road adjacent to Steeplechase. These are senior citizens. You are impacting the traffic. And again, this is in addition to destroying our environment. I can go on and on and on, as can all of my other neighbors, but I will finish with that. So please, please, please reject this project for a third time, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Tonia.
Hi, you may begin talking.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. I'd first like to extend a quick thanks to the Planning Commission for holding this hearing and for the city employees and planners involved in its administration. My name is Joseph Farewell, and I'm a board member of the Los Angeles and Santa Monica Mountains Chapter of the California Native Plant Society. In both that capacity and as a concerned individual, I urge you to deny this project. We echo the concerns of the Sierra Club, the Calabasas Coalition, and other environmental organizations. Put simply, this project is too big, too risky, and too destructive to our local ecology. It's too big because it requires large-scale red grading of a landslide, compromising our valuable local foothills in the process. The size of the project is simply untenable. That does not mean that some project may not be right for this area, but it is not this one. Furthermore, it's too risky, as it presents an undue risk for both wildfire starts and potential damage on the wildland interface. This is an area that has burned before, in the Woosley Fire, as others have discussed, and will assuredly burn again. And finally, it's too destructive to local ecology. It destroys numerous oak trees, black walnuts, and the endangered Mariposa lily. Of course, that destruction also applies to their habitat, and it compromises a vital wildlife corridor, which threatens our already struggling mountain lion population, which may soon be on the brink of local extinction. These factors make the choice clear. Please vote no on the West Village project. It's the wrong choice for an important environmental place. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph.
Hi, you may begin speaking.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name's Larissa Byrne, and I'm a resident of Calabasas 24 years now. And I would like to say a couple of things. Number one, I think it's a little ugly for us to have to wait this long and have a little presentation that goes on and on, that we've already seen all this and heard all this pretty much, but that's beside the point. I'm hearing that the reason for the need to re-engineer our hillsides is public safety, that the landslide needs to be remediated because it's, we got to keep the public safe. So my questions are this. We're in a canyon, we have a landfill within reach, we have the 101 freeway, the businesses that have their own source points of criteria pollutants. Five out of six of these pollutants in the ambient air, when the thresholds are exceeded, will be hazardous to our health, primarily our respiratory systems, okay? Keep that in mind, respiratory systems. Wildfires leave hazardous air in their wake for weeks and weeks. Safety getting us out is another issue that's been spoken about. The availability of clean, fresh water for us is a safety concern, okay? The grading that's going to go on, it's going to have all the particulates in the air, there's another safety concern. And the amount of water, clean, fresh water needed to compact two and a half million cubic yards of earth, it's insane, insane. Floods, fires, earthquakes, safety issue. But there's no charts or analysis or discussions or any kind of mitigation measures. There's nothing that sends those public safety issues are going to be addressed. And for those of us, like my neighbor said, that lived through the Woosley Fire, it is really egregious that there isn't a plan in place for to get us out safely. We couldn't get out up here on north of the freeway. We could not get out when there was two little brush fires that were not even 10 acres. We were trapped. It was gridlocked, chaos. And in this traffic analysis, we're not going to add any problem. It's going to be less than significant over and over. That's the mantra, less than significant. So thank you for letting me talk. I hope you deny this project.
Thank you, Larissa.
We have no more raised hands.
Okay. Do you want to give it a minute, or do you want to take a break and then have the applicants and the staff respond to? I mean, how would the commission like to proceed? We have, we have time for the staff and the applicant to respond to those comments.
I apologize. We have seven, six now, six, seven raised hands.
Oh, well then, let's continue. Sorry.
And I would suggest that we, Commissioner Harrison, you might ask for folks who wish to speak to raise their hand at this time, and then we'll take the hands that are up, and when we get to the end of the current hands, we will, you can decide whether you want, what to do next, but think of this as a virtual submit your cards moment. So, those who want to speak, raise your hands. Thank you.
All right, everyone, please raise your hands so I don't lose confinement.
Hi, you can begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Fatene, and I'm a Calabasas resident for the past 31 years. And first, I would like to say how proud I am to be part of this community where we have so many knowledgeable residents who are so informed about every aspect of our city. And my question is, if our residents are so informed, then how come the members of the city are not as informed? How does this project even come to this point for us to even discuss it? I have no knowledge about any of this ecology, but I know ever since I came here, I came here for the beauty of Calabasas. And every day now, I have anxiety that you come out with all these projects and ruin all this wildlife, all the safety of our residents. It is scary, this traffic, and the fire, it's not ending. I mean, this is just the beginning, and we're going to have more and more fire. So I really don't understand how we are not considering all these issues, and we are coming up with all these projects over and over again. And I really hope that every one of you put the safety of our residents as well as the environment ahead of all this developer, and I really appreciate to having the chance to talk.
Well, thank you for talking, Fatene. Fatene.
Hi, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, commissioners, staff, and everyone who's attending this meeting this evening. My name is Julie Clark de Blasio. I'm with California Native Plant Society. I'm a board member. And I am going to voice some considerations that we haven't in our many letters that we've written and submitted for the various iterations of this project over the years. We argue that the proposed development at the site is better suited as an urban infill and redevelopment project due to the fact it's in a very high fire severity zone. We'll remove existing water features, special habitat, and wildlife resources. We argue that this project is incompatible with the general plan as currently stated due to the major impacts to the land base that go far beyond the built environment footprint and the fact that the site is tangent to conserved open space and to wildlife corridors. We argue that this project is also incompatible with city sustainability goals. We question that, that the calculation of the development footprint only addressed the built environment and not the excessive grading even in natural areas. We question the methods, design, timing of the biological surveys, which did not seem to give accurate information and lack support of science for the proposed mitigation measures for landscaping and rehabilitation of the hillsides. We strongly recommend you thoroughly read the compelling public record of experts, agencies, and local individuals who know a lot about the land and its resources as you consider this, and we recommend you deny the project.
Thank you, Julie.
You may begin talking.
Hello, my name is Molina Byrne, and I've been a resident for over 20 years. And I guess you can say I've been active in trying to understand, for not just me, but for everyone, how this impacts us on such a permanent level. Because what you are considering is something that's going to last forever. When you take down those hills, and when you take down that canyon, you are taking down our hawks, the logo of the city, the iconic views. You are taking down so much, and you don't talk about it. You really are sort of highlighting these nice parts of how you can think about another plan. The other plan is nothing but demolition, about how you're going to take down the canyon, the ancient hillside, and how you're going to take out the marshes for migrating birds. I don't think any of you have even tried to understand for the city how the corridor serves the entire ecosystem of this region that you all are supposed to be stewards of. Do you know this is the only link between the Santa Susana and the Santa Monica Mountain ranges? Do you all understand that? This is a very narrow corridor. And you all are talking about it like it's just a place. No, it is a place to be reckoned with. It's a narrow, narrow link between those mountain ranges that we spend millions, if not billions on. So wildlife matters.
Time.
We are linked to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Molina.
Hi, you may begin talking.
Hi, my name is Mary Hubbard. I'm representing the Malibu Canyon Community Association as well as the Lost Virginus Homeowners Federation. The resolution for denial was absolutely beautiful. My compliments to the person who wrote that. Someone gets it. Exhibit A, however, the resolution for approval directly countered everything in exhibit B. Both of them can't be true. We've got a number of issues that we're going to address through several speakers here. One is that the West Village EIR contradicts the legislative history of the land. That land was put into open space in exchange for upzoning those 16 acres in 2008 as part of the general plan. That 180 is the maximum. It wasn't a guaranteed right, as the developer tries to imply. There are two purposes for open space, protection of significant environmental resources and protection of public health and safety. And those were both reasons expressed in that general plan for why that property was downzoned as open space and the 16 acres was upzoned. So that has to come into consideration. Secondly, approving a permit to grade resource-protected, development-restricted, designated open space would create de facto rezoning amendment to the general plan, which could be legally challenged. The California Court of Appeal in Milbury Association for Resident rejected a claim of vested rights by the developer and agreed with an unincorporated homeowners association that the city's approval of the development that went against its local zoning ordinance amounted to de facto rezoning. Court sided with the general public interest in protecting and enforcing zoning regulations. Any such de facto amendment to the general plan, as with Measure F in 2016, opens approval of the project to the same referendum process that allowed citizens to reverse approval of the Canyon Oaks development in 2016.
Time.
Thank you, Mary.
Hi, you may begin talking.
Hi, this is Lynn Tracy. I'm a resident of Stone Creek, just up the street from this proposed development. I'd like to talk to you briefly about cumulative impact. And I think whenever something comes before the Planning Commission, the city council, plans are looked at as individual parts and not the cumulative impact. And I would suggest that that always needs to be looked at because it's what really happens in the real world to us that live here. And I would ask, when the And I would ask, when the city did their new traffic study, if they did it now, it's during COVID, and nobody's going up and down the canyon. And if they didn't do it now, they did it on old information, and now we have the Paxton project that is having people moving in. So those residents that have now been moving into Paxton would not have been included in the number of vehicles going up and down Lost Virginous. I would also let the planning commissioners know, in case you don't, that with Paxton, whereas you had certain data you made decisions on way back when, the data changed, because Paxton basically did, told you that it was gonna be townhomes that they are gonna sell. Then, when they couldn't sell them, they have now converted them into apartments. So whereas the number of cars you may expect to be in a townhome are very different than an apartment, so I think our numbers, we have no guarantee when this new project were to go in, that the same thing would not happen again, and the mitigation goes much higher. And with that, I will just stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Hi, you may begin talking.
Hi there. My name's Andrew Bear. I've been a resident here for over twenty years, lived on both sides of the proposed site of the freeway, and experienced the two thousand five Topanga Fire and the Woolsey Fire as well. And I just wanna echo the sentiments of all the other actual residents who have taken the time to chime in here, that nobody who lives here, that I've ever spoken to and that we've heard from tonight, agrees with this development plan. Nobody who makes their life and has their daily routine in this corridor, whatever, appreciate the impact this project is proposing in terms of traffic and especially wildfire evacuation risk. And it's just, again, what has been said already, I just think it's sad that we have to remind people to consider the well-being of the residents here when that's your job. I hope you guys really get that loud and clear, that the people have spoken several times. We don't want this development. It's a negative impact on our daily lives. And I understand we do need more housing, but if you wanna have a great example of where to put housing, you know, you might wanna look at the April eighth Los Angeles Times article about the Federal Superior Court Judge of Los Angeles's decision to block the Tihon Ranch development that was proposed right up the Five Highway from here, specifically because of wildfire risk. And why is that any different for this situation right here? It just really doesn't make any sense, and that's all on top of all the other environmental and wildlife and conservation-related concerns that everybody else that has spoken tonight have entered, and, you know, again, it's a symbol of our city, is green hills and open space, and I just hope you really consider what the residents really value.
Time.
Thank you, Andrew.
Hi, you may begin speaking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Juan Carlo. I live here in Calabasas, and this is the second time, so I just gotta say, if a project doesn't fit, they just gotta quit, you know, kinda thing. But I was reading to the July eighteen meeting. I have some comments I gotta read to you guys. Here's Mr. Miller asks, he said, "I think I posted a question last week as well. If the project is turned down and doesn't go through, is this a risk sufficient enough that you could think that the city should take action?" And then there's a comment from Mr. Yalda saying that he, typically what we have done to other properties, we will ask the monitoring measures. We will ask the property owners to provide us with the monitoring measures on this slope, and with those monitaries, I have at least five sites in the city that we are monitoring right now. And then it goes to Mr. Kraut. So this landslide has been identified since the nineties, and in debate on this particular parcel, almost as long. Why is it that has not been monitored? And then it goes to Mr. Yalda. He says, "Not asking him to remediate, we're just asking report of what is status of the landslide." And then from there, Mr. Kraut goes, "Okay, but in conclusion, there's not enough evidence for you today to require the mitigation of this landslide, whether this, if this project choose not to go forward." And then Mr. Yalda goes, "No, there is not." So, I agree with our neighbors. I think we should protect those hills. I'm a biker, and I love, I moved here because of the open space, and what they're proposing there is just not right. We should try to protect our beautiful mountains. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Hi, you may begin.
Hi, my name is Barry Schoenbrun. I'm a homeowner in Calabasas, in the colony, in fact, for sixteen years. Rather than be redundant with what we've heard with regards to the traffic and the issues that concern so many residents, I've heard everybody talk, and it's quite evident, as you've heard, that except for two people who support the project, both of whom do not live in Calabasas, I'm also surprised that with all due respect, staff does not live in Calabasas. Makes you wonder why they're so adamant about pushing this project. The traffic is a major concern. Just leaving and entering the colony is an experience. Ever since the decision was made to widen Lost Virginous, it's like a freeway. They're going forty, fifty miles an hour in both directions. And the increase of activity of this development is just gonna be devastating in the immediate environment. I highly recommend you reject the project. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, Barry.
Hi, you may begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's John Sawara, and we've lived in Calabasas since nineteen seventy-five. We've lived through a couple of major fires. There was one in the early eighties that burned four houses in our housing tract here, Malibu Canyon. And then the Woolsey Fire came through, and it burned nine houses. And several of us stood behind, and, you know, we had hoses trying to put out fires for our neighbors. And it was a, we hardly saw any fire engines, I guess, is what I would like to say. And it was because they were, they were just spread so thin. In any event, what I'd like to do is to suggest that, if you get a chance, read the correspondence. There's over a hundred and one emails and letters in that correspondence from citizens that live in this area, except for one, which is the representative from the American Building Association. And that is the only letter that is in favor of building in building the West Village at Calabasas. All the other letters, one hundred of them, are against it. Nice round number. I also got an email yesterday from Mary Weisbrock, Save Open Space. She's also written a good letter. And she says that a rose, to fill the Rose Bowl, it takes eight hundred and fifteen thousand cubic yards. They're talking about two and a half, moving two and a half million plus yards of cubic yards, which is, I don't know how many Rose Bowls, three plus, filling with dirt. Anyhow, those are my comments. I'm against this project. I've been against it for years, and we represent the Calabasas Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, you may begin. Cynthia? Hello?
She has to unmute. Cynthia, can you unmute? Can you go down, I think, and if you move your cursor, if you move your cursor to the bottom of your screen, at least that's where it is on mine.
Okay.
Now, Cynthia, try again. Go down to the bottom and see where it says unmute. No?
Perhaps take the next speaker and then come back.
All right. All right, she can come back if she can. Okay, we can hear Cynthia later if she can unmute. Go ahead.
Valerie?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Valerie Brinkholder. I'm sure if you've been around here in the city of Calabasas, you've heard from me before. For sure. And guess what? I'm back. I'm just here to help support my mom, Mary Hubbard, to say that we oppose this development, and there has been some somewhat sketchy stuff going on from the city, such as how I think you need a referendum to amend the general plan, but that wasn't really done. So, that was kind of suspicious. Also, there's been no efforts to mitigate this development. For example, has there been any proposed open space to make up for this project? I heard that it's near a wetlands, which is absolutely horrible and probably illegal based on state regulations or even federal regulations of what you can do near a wetlands, because that's an extremely sensitive habitat, and there should not be this amount of grading anywhere near a wetlands. And in order to develop an ancient landslide like this, there would have to be an insane amount of grading done, and that would result in also an insane amount of erosion if any rains were to come through, or if any fires were to come through and burn up this area, leaving the hills exposed to erosion by rains. And you all know what happens when that takes place in this area. My family almost lost their house during the last fire. Several of our neighbors' houses burned down, so why would we be building this development if it was just gonna be in such a sensitive habitat and could be susceptible to fires? Also, this is supposed to be a wildlife corridor, could be a habitat for the endangered red-legged frogs. Frogs cannot breed in a wide range. They need a, if they're in one area, they will breed in that area. They won't move very far. So disturbing their habitat could be really detrimental to the population. And I'm just not sure that that's been fully studied in order to approve this plan, so I would say we should not approve this development.
Valerie, time is up.
All right, thank you. Bye.
Thanks, Valerie.
Hi, you may begin.
Hello, this is Carl Erlich. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ah, good. I'm Carl Erlich, as I said, and I've been a resident of Calabasas for almost fifty years now. The recommendation process this time should be almost trivial for you folks, because you've already on record for objecting to the basic proposal with its emphasis on extensive landslide mitigation that is required. This mitigation, as you well know, extends well into open space, which in turn is a well-defined by the Calabasas Municipal Code as not including manufactured slopes or artificially represented landscape features. I've also noted in my, that incursion in my silk purse out of a Salisbury PowerPoint briefing chart package that's in the correspondence that you have received. Therefore, you recommended the denial of the proposition. I voted three to two in two thousand nineteen, but you left the door open at that time for possible new alternative. But in the meantime, there's been no changes in the design of the development, basic design, to change that denial. An alternative for just doesn't even exist anymore. The new alternative that has been submitted is merely another redo in the arrangement of their residential buildings from the basic proposal, and retains the same grading and incursion into open space. Therefore, your negative recommendations that are already on the books is still valid, and it will be easily renewed, closing the door on that once and for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl.
Hi, you may begin talking.
Hi, David Lett. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good, good. I wanna say hello to everybody tonight. I'm a former planning commissioner. I'm a twenty-year resident. And I'm gonna say ditto to the thirty, thirty-five comments. There's been amazing comments. I hope you all listen to those comments. I'm not gonna repeat them. I'm opposed to the project. I'm gonna tell you a story that my late father taught me, who was in real estate. He said, "Real estate is the greatest investment in the world, but not everybody makes money at it." And unfortunately, the way I summarize this piece of property is sadly, new home bought a lemon. And it shouldn't be, we should not be penalized, the city of Calabasas. My second comment, so it's not buildable. It's a complete denial, and that needs to stay open and for the rest of my life and others, that property will probably never be able to be sold again, unless there's some sucker that comes along. My second comment is I'm amazed, being twenty years in the city, is how the planning commission, how the planners come to the planning commission with arrogance every time and a sales job. And so I had to listen to an hour and a half sales job, and the real comments are from the public, who have done their work. And so, you know, this thing should have never even come before the planning commission. And I think the plan I would love, if somebody could take the courage on the planning commission to ask how many hours were inputted for this particular project. It's gotta be, it's gotta be two, three hundred hours. And you have, you had five different people, the same players, Rincon, Joe Power. You know, why doesn't the city have another EIR company? So, it's a waste of money and a waste of time.
Time.
Thank you, David.
Hi, you may begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Priscilla Lee. Can you hear me fine?
We can hear you now, Priscilla.
Oh, great. Okay. Although I realize that you planning commissioners, planning commissioners are aware of our city codes and the laws for our beautiful city in Calabasas, I want to remind you of a couple of the codes that would be violated if this project were to be allowed to be constructed. First, the code that states that the development should fit the land rather than altering the land to fit the development definitely is being ignored. This proposal indicates that V-digits, the grading of the ancient landslide, would replace our beautiful hillsides. And that code is seventeen point twenty point one five oh B three. The planning and the planning commission previously rejected a similar plan with the public voting against a similar project with no on F in two thousand sixteen. Yet we're still having to express our views against Alternative Five, which is almost as same as the original. Our land use codes and general plan also state that the scenic corridor must comply, must comply with the scenic corridor guidelines and the hillside development standards. And that's code seventeen point two oh point zero 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 seven zero C. Alternative Five does not do that either. Last, but certainly not least, if we were to allow new homes to come per se with this development, the safety of our whole community would be compromised. As you remember, during the Woolsey Fire, various roads were blocked, and many citizens were unable to evacuate. Please do not allow this developer to cause harm to our city residents by adding additional homes and businesses to our community. Thank you. Please deny the project.
Thank you, Priscilla. And thanks for being persistent and coming back.
Hi, you may begin speaking.
Who is it?
Mr. Schoenbrun?
He already spoke. I believe he already spoke.
Okay. So that would be the end of it.
All right, anybody else who wants to speak, could you raise your hand, or I forgot what you, I mean, press, press, raise hand? Is it in the participant section? Where do they do that?
Yes, under attendees.
Got it. So they go to participant. Got it. So they go to participant attendees and then I don't even see.
Don't see any more hands. It looks like everyone's has had their chance to talk.
All right.
With one question, Chair Harrison, Ms. Mendoza, there was the speaker, Ms. Purcell, who had the technological trouble. Maybe you were seeing if she wanted to speak. The others have had their chance.
Okay. Yes, Cynthia Purcell, I believe it was.
Okay, let me ask if she would like to speak.
Or maybe she could speak by telephone.
Hi Cynthia, are you still with us?
Square is there.
Yeah, we would be hate to have someone prejudices as a result of technology.
But maybe she does not know how to unmute it and because I can see it's still muted. Her square is there, but it's muted. Oh, now it's unmuted. Cynthia, can you hear us now?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, well, you know, I have listened to kind of like both sides and I think without a doubt it should not go in and for, for all the reasons that all the residents of Calabasas have described and it seems like it was, you know, an idea of putting homes in a place that would never, never work. It should go back to the shepherds and let's put the sheep on it. That's all.
Cynthia, are you a resident of Calabasas?
Uh, no. But I live in the area.
Okay. What city?
Mountain View.
Oh, okay. That's definitely Calabasas area. Okay. Thank you Cynthia. All right, since there's nobody, oh, thank you. So since there's no one else, I have to ask the commissioners, what would you like to do? We could take a break. We could ask questions of the the, or the applicant and staff could possibly respond if they want, or we could ask, or how do you want to proceed?
Michael, I have a question of you and of staff and of Matt. It's the same question. We've been sitting here now for three and a half hours, didn't take a break. It's okay, you know, because we needed to get the momentum resolved here. And I think we've done that. We do have another meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, right, at six o'clock to conclude and determine what steps need to be taken. And with everything that's happened this evening, Matt, is there any reason that we can't either close the public hearing and then deliberate next Wednesday? And I'm sure that the consultants that are necessary between now and then, as we might indicate that we need help from, they'll be here. So why don't we just move to next Wednesday to deal with the deliberations and have a chance to absorb a lot of what we've heard this evening.
That's fine with me. Is that okay, Matt?
It would be perfectly legal to close the public hearing. And then I would recommend at that point, if there's questions that any commissioner has that require additional information to be developed, ask those questions and then staff will begin, staff and the relevant consultants will begin the, the meeting in a week with answers to the information that you need, then commission can deliberate and make a decision. That would be perfectly legal if desired.
What about the other commissioners? Any comments or suggestions?
I, I would be prepared to adjourn as Dennis has suggested. I wasn't quite sure what Matt has said at the end. Are you suggesting we pose certain questions now so that the city and the consultants can think about those to respond to them when we come back or did?
Yeah, that's, thank you, John. That's my suggestion is if there's particularly questions that if there's any additional analysis that you wish to have happen, this would be the opportunity to pose the question, giving the experts a chance to analyze the matter.
If I could, this is Tom Barley. I, one small request, which is if you're going to take a long time to come up with the questions and give them to us, I'd like for us to take a break. That'd be awesome. Before that.
Well, I don't think the questions would be final here. I mean, we've just gotten a lot of information.
You can ask them again next time.
So, you know, if you have questions that are on your mind, I guess, go ahead, but ask them. And then you may have other questions next. It's Wednesday, I believe, next week, right? It's not, not Thursday. I guess everybody should know that. Any other suggestions or can I close the public hearing? Oh, Dennis.
I was going to say, if you close the public hearing, I don't need to worry about that at this point. And we've heard from just about everybody who knew about this meeting and was, you know, very concerned about the issues that we're facing here. There is an opportunity for the folks who have learned something this evening to provide further written input, I'm sure, that would be helpful to us and to staff. And if there are questions of legal nature that might arise between now and next Wednesday, I have several things on my mind that I'd like to, you know, consider. And I don't want to raise them if they're going to be troublesome, but I want to raise them if they're going to be helpful to our decision-making. And I do want to in fact speak with our attorney about a couple of those things. And we heard some testimony this evening from various folks and we know from our own experience that there is a lot of complexity here. And we did hear from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And we've heard some folks refer to the wildlife corridors or the single and narrow one, which is actually not all that accurate at this point. There's a whole bunch of history that has to deal with land ownership partnerships in dealing with the land uses that are here, including the water district. You know, because there's a number of things there that I think are important for us to consider. But again, they may not be pertinent and I'd like to talk with our attorney or attorneys about that between now and next Wednesday.
All right. And also, even if I do close the public hearing, I can always open it if somebody was out of town or some, for some reason, or something unusual.
But I don't think, you, I don't think you want to go there in order to have another, you know, 100 peoples.
No, 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 I don't want that.
Speak again, you know, so we're trying to get to a decision point here.
Right.
And our job is to actually make a recommendation to the city council in the first place. So our deliberations are ultimately to deal with, you know, resolution A or resolution B, depending on the action we take, or some third pathway that might be significant on what we've heard this evening and what we know from our engagement with the community and our professions as well.
All right then, any initial questions that's not precluding other questions, but John, did you have some?
I, I would like the staff and the consultants to address the, the issue of whether or not the EIR did, and if not, why not, address the impacts related to the Woolsey Fire. I did not see that in the hundreds, if not thousands of pages that I reviewed. And obviously, it's a very large and, and valid concern on the part of the public. Is there an impact there, an environmental impact from the, the issues related to, to egress and ingress when, when we have a significant fire and we've had them many times in the past and, and unfortunately, we will in the future. So that's one. I do want the staff and probably the city attorney to very much address Mr. Schonfeld's comments. And I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think he basically said, "Look at city, you're kind of between a rock and a hard place. You, you have a general plan that provides for this kind of development." And it was developed, and that plan was put into place at the time of a, not with knowledge of a landslide that required a safety factor. And so it should be really no surprise to anyone that, that there is this landslide mitigation required. And now we heard evidence that it's at least the position of the, of the applicant that that landslide problem is so significant that in effect, there could be no building on this property at all without full mitigation of the landslide. And I'd like the city attorney and others to address those points that Mr. Schonfeld and others made. I also would like a discussion regarding alternative five in terms of if we were to decide that it is an environmentally superior alternative to the proposed project, is it required that it be approved if anything is approved? In other words, are we, are we obligated to approve an environmentally preferable project over something else that would otherwise satisfy the, the codes? So if you assume the proposed, assume, not making any decisions, if you assume the proposed project satisfies the codes, but there is an environmentally preferable one that also satisfies the codes, are we not obligated to approve the environmentally preferable alternative, whether it's five or something else? We have the power to modify or to propose, I think. So I'm not precluding anybody from coming up with a superior alternative. Let me just look at my notes here real quick. I do think we need to have a clearer picture. I don't, with all respect to Tom, I think, which I think did a great job on the housing element issue. What, what is the situation if the alternative five or something significantly different and smaller than alternative five were recommended to the council? Would we still be in compliance with the housing accountability requirements and arena issue? What, what's the wiggle, wiggle room there? I'd just like that further addressed if that, if that's possible. And then finally, just in a general way, the safety element of the general plan. Again, this is kind of repeating myself on the fire issue and the Woolsey egress issue. It has the EIR adequately addressed the safety element vis a vis the fire issue. So those are ones that I just jotted down. I reserve the right to come up with more.
No problem. Bob, do you have any preliminary questions?
Yes, I have concerns about the traffic. I think it's inadequate. I think it's misleading and I think it, and I will pick it apart like a turkey next week. I think it hurts the people because of the fire danger. And while they may, we have a lot of rules, they have totally ignored the reality of the situation.
All right. And Daniel, you're muted, so I don't know.
My interest is in the fire danger and being that, in that corridor and what obligation, you know, how hard that's going to be for firefighters to fight if fire does get in that corridor. And if they are spread thin, you know, what is the fire department say about this? That's my main question.
Thanks, Daniel. My only question is, I guess for Mr. Price, was he working for the city at the time the general plan was adopted back in 2015, I believe it was? And if so, why wouldn't he have presented all that evidence then? It doesn't, something doesn't add up to me. So maybe there's some clarification on that. All right, those are some of our preliminary questions.
Excuse me, applicant Michael Schonfeld, is it okay if I ask a question? I don't think you guys have closed hearing yet, right?
Yeah. Oh, I closed the public hearing, but.
Did you close it? Okay, I didn't. I missed that. I was.
Well, I'll close it. All right. If I haven't.
I was only going to ask if the applicant might have time as well to weigh in.
Oh, we, we were going to give the applicant and staff time to respond to the comments. Do I have to leave the public hearing open for that? Maureen?
My recommendation, yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you would, to allow the applicant to speak, we would need to leave the public hearing open. As we had recommended at the beginning, the applicant be given a chance to respond to questions raised in the.
Oh, yeah. We, we did want to leave the time for the applicant and the staff to respond to those questions. And now we have additional questions from some of the commissioners. So, all right. So then the public hearing won't be closed yet. Yes, Maureen?
Staff would request that the council, the commission, that we gather our notes from tonight and respond to the public comments as well as the questions posed at the next meeting. I don't want to try and cram answers to very good questions and comments tonight into a short timeframe. So thank you.
Well, thank you. We have ample time, I believe, at the next, at the next scheduled hearing date, which is the 21st.
If we have someone from the applicant who has issues to be able to put on our docket between now and then, why don't we just hear them now before we, before we close the meeting?
Well.
Well, I'm peeping the public hearing open.
I mean, I think issues, issues of Mr. Chairman are different than responses. I think Mr. Schonfeld correctly wants a full opportunity to respond, not only to what the public said, but to what our questions are. And I think he's going to have that opportunity.
Correct. We can do that next week for sure. But I mean, there were questions that, you know, the applicant team had to put on the docket so that our team can actually have some, you know, an adequate amount of time because Wednesday's upon us. You got tomorrow with.
So you're talking about quest, I'm sorry, you're talking about questions from.
Posing questions for staff. Michael, the applicant, that's not their role. But the point is taken. What we will, if you leave the public hearing open, then the applicant can speak next time. That would also mean, and here I would recommend that it, because it's, it's one hearing over two nights, anyone who didn't speak tonight could speak next time, but not, people don't get a second bite.
Right. Oh, okay. So that's a way of doing it. All right. So fine. So we'll continue the public hearing next Wednesday at six o'clock. Anyone who hasn't spoken may speak and certainly Mr. Schonfeld or your, your consultants or staff or whatever can, can respond to the questions or comments that have been raised and the staff can respond to the questions and comments.
And the other thing is that it's appropriate that if they're going to be talking with staff between now and next Wednesday as well, you know, that gets at least into the hopper so we can all have that information to be able to deal with it.
All right. So, yes, Bob?
If the applicant, excuse me, if the applicant or staff is going to introduce new evidence, shouldn't the public have a chance to comment on it?
I think they're just responding. My, my thoughts were they're just going to respond.
We, we did not plan to introduce new evidence, but to respond to the comments that have been put forward this evening. And to answer clarified questions that have been put to us.
And certainly if significant new information is put on the table, then we would recommend reopening the hearing for any member of the public to further comment on that. But my, my expectation is the same as Mr. Murray. It's, the record is, is the packet now. It's discussion of their, discussion of the existing packet.
All right. So they come up with some new documents or new information, then that's a whole different story. But right now, it's just responding to public comments and questions.
And anyone in the public who wishes to submit further written material, of course, can do so. The city always takes written material.
All right. So further written material, anyone who has not spoken tonight. Anything else or can we adjourn to next week? Oh, did you have something, John? Or no, you're just looking at it?
No, no.
Oh. All right. So is anybody opposed to adjourning or?
I would just ask, you know, since the agenda does impact this, the director's report, and if there are reports from members of the, of the commission itself.
All right. I'm sorry. I was just talking about adjourning the public hearing or, you know, this matter.
We'll close the, this meeting on that.
Right. And then.
There may not be a director's report and that might be next week. I'm not sure what we have.
Right. Next on the agenda is the director's report and the reports from members of the planning commission and that's it. So any director's report, Maureen, or are we waiting?
We have none this evening. Thank you.
All right. Any reports from the planning commissioners?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I just, I would be remiss not to say that to the public that's still listening, we did receive your letters and, and, and I certainly, and I believe all my fellow commissioners have studied them. Many of them came in today, but I read them anyway. And I'm very mindful of them and very much appreciate the thought and depth of analysis that so many of you did in your, in your written comments. And I think I probably speak for everybody by saying that.
You do, John. You speak for all of us. I've saved all the comments and and I do thank the community for coming out again and, and making all those comments. So with that, then unless I hear otherwise, we can adjourn this meeting until next Wednesday at six o'clock. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.